Good morning, folks. We're going to get started with the first bills. Good morning, folks. Welcome to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. My name is Ryan Dorsey. I'm the Chair of the Committee. It's December 1st. We have five bills on the agenda today. The first four we're going to hear are routine land use bills. Actually, we've already heard the bills. We're just going to take votes on these. And then we will take a short recess and then move on to working on 25-0066. With us here today, we have, to my far right, we have Councilman Parker.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
To his left, to my right here, we have Councilman Felicia Porter.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
To my left over here, we have Councilman Zach Blanchard.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
I know that we have Councilman Paris Gray in the House. I'm sure he'll be seated with us momentarily. We have our staff member, Julianne John. How are you doing today?
Good, how are you?
I'm great. We also have, both of us, representatives from various city agencies, the mayor's office, and in the back here, we have some members from the council president's office and the council member's staff. Sorry, I'm being told I have a microphone issue. Turns out it's not the first time. We have, I'm going to make sure we get these bills in order of their numbers. Going to look for, we... Okay. We will begin with bill number 25-0055. Zoning, conditional use parking lot, principal use, variances, 701 Mura Street. We heard this bill on November 20th. We took a vote on the finding of facts to the effect that of the justification for the variances. We did not vote on this bill because we were waiting on an amendment from the Law Department. We now have that amendment in our packet. It says on page one and line 21 after granted, insert "for a variance," and on page two and lines two and six, in each instance, after granted, insert "for a variance." I'll put this amendment up here. All in favor of supporting this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Abstain? On behalf of the sponsor, Councilman Jones, I will make a motion here that the committee recommend this bill favorable with the amendment. All in favor of moving the bill favorable with amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Great. 25-0055 will be recommended to the council as favorable at the next council meeting, which is this Thursday at 5:00 p.m. Is that right? 5:00 p.m.? Yeah. Yeah, this Thursday. Next, the companion to this bill, the property across the street from it, 25-0056. Zoning, conditional use parking lot, principal use, variances, 702 Mura Street. This bill also has with it the same amendment from the Law Department inserting the phrase "for a variance" in several places. This is just language that had just been erroneously omitted in drafting the original bill. Again, all in favor of adopting this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Great, the amendment is adopted. On behalf of the sponsor, Councilman Jones, is there a motion to move the bill favorable with amendment?
Second.
All in favor of adopting, of recommending this bill favorable with the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, this bill will be recommended favorable with the amendment to the council at its next meeting on Thursday. Council Bill 25-0073. Zoning, conditional use, conversion to a banquet hall in the IMU-1 zoning district, variances, 1100 Wycomico Street. We heard this bill on the 20th of November. The sponsor could not be here for the hearing, but we did have the hearing as it had been advertised by the applicant. We don't like to waste people's money when it has cost them money to advertise things, so, but we do want to make sure that we have the sponsor of the bill present either for the hearing or for the vote. We did find and take a vote on a finding of facts on this bill that reflected the fact that bills that have been passed more recently make it so that the variance of the parking requirement would no longer be required. So, the finding effectively was that the variance is not required anymore. And we don't have any amendments to the bill. And so, shall we have a motion to vote the bill favorable?
Second.
Great, and all in favor of recommending this bill favorable, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Last on this routine bill set here, we have Council Bill 25-0090. Zoning, conditional use, conversion of a single-family dwelling to two dwelling units in the R-7 zoning district, variance 220 North Culver Street. Again, we held the bill hearing because the applicant had done the advertising. We wanted to make sure that we had the sponsor of the bill present before taking a vote on it. This one, we also did take a vote on findings of fact, again, to the effect, like with the last bill, that the variance that this bill would have required is no longer required because of the adjustment to the Vulcan yard standards that occurred with the passage of recent legislation. And so, the sponsor care to make a motion to move the bill forward? All right, the bill's been moved. We, all in favor of recommending this bill favorably to the council, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstain? Great, this bill will also be recommended, so all four of these bills will be recommended favorable to the full city council at its next meeting this coming Thursday. We're going to take a five, 10-minute recess here and just regroup for a second before we begin the hearing on Council Bill 25-0066. Okay, we're going to begin here on Council Bill 25-0666. Having had a hearing on this previously and intending to hold a work session today, it was not the intention to take public testimony, additional public testimony today. But seeing as though we've had such a significant turnout of folks, we will have public testimony, and we will begin with the public testimony. So, just to, again, for, since we've taken this recess, I'll just announce this bill and I'll re-make sure everybody knows who we've got here. Again, we are on Council Bill 25-066. Zoning, housing options and opportunity. We have, to my left, the Vice Chair of the Committee, Vice President of the City Council, Sharon Green Middleton. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To her left, Councilman Black, Zach Blanchard.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
To my right, our committee staff member, Tony Leva. To his right, we have Councilmember Felicia Porter. We have Councilmember Paris Gray. And to the far right, we have Councilmember Mark Parker. Glad to be here with everybody this morning. We may be joined by Councilman Bullock. He teaches on Monday mornings, and this is not our usual committee time. So, he may be able to make it after that. We heard this bill on November 20th. We heard from the sponsor of the bill, Representative of the Mayor's Office. We heard from city agencies presenting their bill reports and additional comments. We had some dialogue between the committee members and the agencies and the administration. And we had fairly substantial public testimony, both for and against. We will continue with further public testimony today, beginning with those here in opposition. We did not have, as we did not, this was planned to be a work session, and so we didn't actually have a sign-up sheet outside for people with the, okay, we did have a sign-up sheet here. Yeah. Okay, well, we will take Janet Blair first. Okay, we'll go to somebody else. Michael Scott. You will have two minutes. Everybody who testifies will have two minutes. We have, it looks like about 15 people signed up here to testify. I will take the people who have signed up on these sheets. Just one moment here before I begin, because I do see some people here who I imagine want to testify but have not, whose names I don't see on here. Is there an additional sheet that we can get? Okay, so there's still some people signing. We will get to those sheets after they get brought in. I'll go through these initial sheets first. Michael Scott, you have two minutes. Oh, sorry. Hit that right button there. It'll light up red. Hold on, is it lit up red? I can't see.
Yes.
Okay, great. You have two minutes.
Chair, Councilmembers, my, thank you. My name is Michael Scott. I live in a black, middle-class neighborhood that has held this city together for generations. I'm here to say this plainly. This bill is another experiment being run on the backs of black neighborhoods. Baltimore has a long and painful history of piloting its boldest, riskiest, least-tested ideas on the very communities that have already endured redlining, blockbusting, reverse redlining, and decades of administrative neglect. This legislation continues that pattern. Let me say what everyone knows but no one seems in this chamber to really say. And we are in touch directly with the homeowner associations. Roland Park, Guilford, Homelands, Cedar Croft, and other covenant communities are functionally isolated from the very density, conversions, institutional uses, and speculative pressures this bill unleashes. Their private covenants, architectural boards, and enforcement mechanisms give them a protective shield that my neighborhood and every black, middle-class neighborhood like it simply do not have. To say otherwise is a lie, disingenuous, and it's anti-oppression, it's oppression-washing. They are excluded in practice, and even when this bill pretends to be universal. Meanwhile, neighborhoods like ours, without private covenants but with rich history, culture, and intergenerational black wealth, are expected to absorb all the risk. You could do this right, but you're jamming it down our throats. You don't have a health impact assessment, which we brought to this city with Johns Hopkins and the planning department. You didn't do it. You're running this down. You're not taking testimony. I also want to address a deeply manipulative talking point that has been used to silence legitimate critique. The idea that residents raising concerns are anti-rener. This is gaslighting. Covenant communities defend their stability, and it is praised as responsible planning in a way to increase wealth. When black communities defend our stability, we're accused of prejudice. This is double standard. It's false, it's offensive, and it's designed to avoid confronting the city's actual administrative failures. Failure to regulate predatory investors, failure to oversee group homes, failure to enforce codes, failure to maintain neighborhood communes. Our concerns are not about renters. Our neighborhoods already include renters, seniors, working families, students, and new arrivals. Our concerns are about the unmanaged destabilization imposed by a government-
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
-that has not earned the public's trust. I also need to stell this best practices argument being used as cover. This is bureaucratic equivalent of a dog training trick-
Mr. Scott, can you please wrap it up?
-doing something outside the, sure, I've got 30 seconds. The animal's frame of reference, so it assumes the trainer has special authority. When the administrative invokes Minneapolis or Portland, that is not evidence, it is illusion of expertise. Those cities have functional enforcement, coherent permitting, operational rentals inspection systems, and no covenant-protected enclaves immune to reform. Baltimore shares none of those conditions. A best practice without baseline capacity is not a best practice, it's a malpractice. Do better.
Micah Hayden.
Great day, Councilmember.
You have the floor. You have two minutes.
Great day, Councilmembers. I am Micah Hayden, a resident of Ashburn area, one of Baltimore's rich and culturally and diverse communities. My neighborhood is close-knit, and that's one of the reasons why I moved here in 2022. I moved from Nashville, Tennessee. Nashville, Tennessee is supposedly the best practices that you all want to go to. You name this in multiple events that I went to, Nashville, Austin, Miami, along with Atlanta, and I do not believe the practices that you are all suiting for. Allow for the bill that is proposed, Bill 25-0066, would allow for four units on every single, single-family lot in the city. It's reasonable. The reason I am stating this is because the cost of living in Baltimore is very, is very, sorry, the cost of living in Baltimore is actually affordable according to national data. National data states that it is 14% below the national average. With it being 14% below the national average and being a coastal city, I believe you're underselling and undermining the actual real estate, real estate and actual land that you withhold on this port. This is one of the largest ports. It's the fourth biggest port on the East Coast. I recommend that you put a stop and vote no to this bill because studies have not been done in an unbiased way to determine if the homeownerships, the schools, the vacancies, and the property taxes, and the property values are being conducted, are being suppressed, or how they affect long-term or short-term. I urge the council to vote no to this bill. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Douglas Armstrong.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Douglas Armstrong, 2828 North Howard Street. My home of 30 years is one of the rowhouse zones that was targeted for increased density in Bill 25-0064 and this Bill 0066. I have not received notice that I believe was required by law for either bill. And while the Law Department has some interesting things to say about that very issue in its report on this bill, that report was not reviewed at the last hearing, even though the code requires that, and it hasn't been reviewed so far this hearing either. The most important thing I want to point out today to those of you who support this bill is that Dr. Lawrence Brown has shown you the error of your ways and that the arguments in favor of the bill are a farce. He has provided you your own data, your own information, to prove that this bill is wrong for Baltimore and needs to be defeated. As is clearly proven by Dr. Brown's submission against Bill 66, you are clearly favoring the haves at the expense of the have-nots. The brazen protection of the R-1 through R-4 at the expense of the rowhouse neighborhoods is nothing short of criminal. And I'm speaking to you, Mr. Dorsey. Bill 0064 and this bill merely proves that. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Batts.
Good morning, Council. My name is Linda Batts. When the mayor introduced the Housing Options and Opportunity Act on May 12th, he promised to expand housing in areas affected by racist zoning laws, which will make it possible to build the types of housing that exclusionary zoning has long prohibited. Expanding housing options in neighborhoods where racist zoning laws dictate who can live there and how. However, the bill lacks studies identifying these laws, their impacts, or how this bill will increase access for those previously excluded from these communities due to exclusionary zoning laws predicated on race and economics. In other words, from a layperson's standpoint, how is this bill going to benefit the people who live on Gilmore to get to Guilford, from Rosemont to get to Roland Park, and from Harlem Park to get to Homewood? These questions remain unanswered. In fact, in Baltimore, the lines are being drawn to separate further, as has been stated, the haves from the have-nots, the least of us from the most of us. And this Bill 25-0066 will impact our communities in different ways and is being leveraged to advantage a class of people who do not represent the most of us. On Monday, November 24th, the mayor's staff met with a dozen community leaders at Robert Coleman Elementary School. In that meeting, there were many misstatements of fact, declarations that were made that are clearly untrue, and questions that were asked that could not be answered. Am I correct?
Yes, Ms. Batts.
Okay. Subsequent to that meeting, four days later, on November 28th, Mayor Scott released a statement about the interactive mapping tool, which was demonstrated on November 24th, but provided limited clarification. In fact, the press release states, "Most homes are under 1,500 square feet and will see no impact." But it adds that properties around 1,500 to 2,250 square feet may be developed into duplexes. It's unclear. What's with the around and the approximations? We need specific data-
Thank you, Ms.
-mathematical points that reflect what's necessary.
Thank you, Ms. Batts.
And I'd just like to end by saying that this bill fails to honor the requirements, the mandatory compulsory requirements that the mayor set forth in his own equity ordinance, stating that each agency must, it's not discretionary, it's not arbitrary, they must conduct empirical studies and analyses, health impact analysis, environmental impact analysis, public safety studies, and all of the other kinds of studies that are attendant to dealing with new existing and built environments. This has not been done universally across the board-
Thank you, Ms. Batts.
-agency by agency. I thank you for the opportunity to share this comment, these comments, and have further comments that have been submitted for the record to testimony.gov that I hope that you will consider before precipitously moving forward-
Thank you, Ms. Batts.
-with this unnecessary bill that will injure most of the people in Baltimore City-
Thank you, Ms. Batts.
-the least of us.
Here, here. Paula Scott.
If it's possible, I would like to yield my two minutes so that she can finish her statement.
No, we don't do that. Each person can have two minutes. You can have your two minutes if you'd like.
It'd be different if it was a different situation. My name is Paula Scott. I live in the Lock Raven-
If you could pull the microphone down a little bit. Thank you, Ms. Paula.
My name is Paula Scott, and I live in the Lock Raven community. I'd like to start by saying that the budget for Baltimore City doubled from the year 2021 to the year 2025-26. And I would say, I would continue to say, due to the flight of families elsewhere, property taxes have also doubled to cover the deficit. While services in Baltimore have decreased tremendously, the taxes on personal properties have increased, if not doubled. We've brought in casinos, marijuana, new stadiums. All of this was built to bring in additional income. The city also says it's in need of money. It's always saying it's in need of money. In fact, mm, okay, when, if the city is in need of money, why then would you allow investors to build the neighborhoods without requiring them to get permits? The math is just not mathing. If this bill goes forward, I imagine that the consequences in single-unit neighborhoods will increase, if not double. Certain neighborhoods with privileged information won't have to deal with this because they had foresight or were probably forewarned. What happens when you start building metered parking garages next to those dwellings that they convert to apartments? That, in a single-family unit, in a single-family neighborhood, it's just atrocious. I do not agree with any of these bills. Single-family dwellings should stay, single, as single-family dwellings in single-family communities. I think that you all need to go back to the table and rethink all of these bills.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. and Mrs. Walt, do you both wish to testify? You're both on the sheet here. Okay. Come on. I'm not. I'm going to call you next, though. I've given you some time here. I'm going to call you next.
My name is Christopher Walt, and I live in Laurville at 2829 O'Land Avenue. My reason for being against this bill, I've lived in the city all my life. The house I live in now, I took over from my parents, who lived there since '57. They had issues prior to 2001, when I bought the house, of multi-unit housing in that neighborhood, where it caused two problems. One was parking. Number two, the absentee landlords, the properties were not well-maintained. When I took over the property in 2001, since then, my wife and I have spent close to $100,000 to upgrade the house to make it what it is today, and we're very happy living there. I can tell you, I had an experience with a multi-unit, whether it was Leo or not, I don't know, across the street from me, for a number of years. What took place is these units comprised of seven to eight cars parked in there. I'd come home from work, and I had to look for parking. Secondly, the property itself was not being maintained, the absentee landlords. So, I'm down here today saying I do not support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walt. Ma'am, yes, Ms. Blair. Ms. Blair. No, we're gonna take Ms. Blair right now.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Blair.
I basically want to say that it bothers me that this city, and I guess this country now, nobody wants to be concerned with standards. All young people, they come in, got their own ideas, and wanna flip everything around for their convenience. And that's not good. This city used to have inspectors and people who came around to make sure that you followed the city ordinance, that you didn't intrude on your neighbors, that you didn't come up with some crazy idea to disturb the neighborhood. I don't know how Bolton Hill and neighborhoods like that get to be exempt. Some people have called them legacy neighborhoods. So my question is, how do I apply for my neighborhood, Robert W. Coleman area, West Baltimore, to become a part of legacy? So that all these crazy ideas that somebody comes up with, they can't just do them without getting the community, people who are already settled there, to agree to it. If they don't like it, then they can go build on some of these empty lots we got in the city. God knows we got enough of them. So how do I apply for my neighborhood to be on the legacy list and not be one that can just, anybody can come in and flip it over and do whatever they want? That's my question.
We're taking testimony. We're not gonna answer questions.
So can Mr. Dorsey, can I come to your office or call your office tomorrow to ask you how to apply for that, for my neighborhood?
You can submit the question in writing, and we will consider it.
But you don't take personal conversations anymore?
Is this your testimony?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Blair.
Thank you for nothing.
We've, we heard from Mr. John Murphy at the previous hearing, but I guess we're gonna hear from Mr. John Murphy again.
Nice to see you again, Mr. Chairman. I'm a lawyer, and I have a legal point that I want to make. We're dealing here with zoning. Zoning is discreet, different uses. For over 100 years, we've had a zone known as a single-family zone. For many years, according to testimony, that served as a barrier for black advancement. They were segregated communities. I don't deny that. Didn't really have anything to do with zoning, but it was a means of segregation. Today, the reverse is the case. These same communities are many times populated by African-American citizens. And is zoning a help to them or a hindrance? And my point is this. It's a great help because the state law says, once you do comprehensive zoning, it cannot be changed except in the case of change or mistake. So that gives a stability, a permanence, to the zoning that many African-American communities have today. As a matter of fact, it's equivalent, very much equivalent, to the covenants that exist in largely white communities, such as Guilford, Homeland, and Roland Park. If you take away the single-family character of this zone, you are eliminating that protection which they have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. I believe we also heard from Mr. Charlie Duff at the last hearing, but we'll hear from him again, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I'm Charlie Duff from Bolton Hill. I think this bill as drafted is an honest attempt to solve a problem and open an opportunity. I'm against the bill as drafted because I don't think we know enough to know whether it's going to work and because I don't think, I actually agree with just about everything people have said, I don't think that it fits the actual circumstances that Baltimoreans live in today. But I'm still grateful to you, Councilman Dorsey, for bringing the issue up because it is a live issue. It's a national issue. I represent my neighborhood, Bolton Hill, and I've worked with a bunch of other neighborhoods. And I was going to propose and have proposed an amendment, but I don't need to because Councilman Parker has proposed it. What I would ask you to do is to say, this is a complicated question. We're going to spend a year and get it right, and get it right for Baltimore and the places and the people of Baltimore. We're gonna get it right and come back with another bill. But in the meantime, as the mayor says, homeowners may need to get a little bit of extra income in the house. They may want to have elderly relative or a young relative come live with them. And as I understand it, Councilman Parker's amendment does that. So I would like to speak in favor of Councilman Parker's amendment against the bill as drafted. And in this, I speak for my Neighborhood Association in Bolton Hill and for many, many other people in many, many neighborhoods, white and black. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mariau Onyanaka.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. All right. So in Baltimore, the zone from R5 through R8, it's about 168,000 properties. Of those, 59,500 would be developed, could be developed as a planned multifamily building to meet a certain size. And about 81,000 of them would actually, could be developed without a size requirement. I live in a neighborhood where the lots are huge. I also live in a neighborhood that was redlined and blockbusted. So we are vulnerable. I've been there 20 years. We've been working on trying to get a balance in our community. Over the years, lots of houses were converted into multi-units because we were blockbusted. And we had sought the R6 in order to protect ourselves so that more units couldn't be converted. This bill would make it possible for everyone to convert. And the "everyone" is a lot of people who are investors. We are a reasonably priced neighborhood. We have people, finally, we're more than 50% homeownership, just recently. So what you're doing is shooting us in the back. If this goes through, we're in a position where we're going to be inundated even more so by developers, by people who are trying to invest because it's reasonable to buy in our community. Which means it's a great community for people to be their first-time homeowners. People who are middle-class, who are like, "I would like to be a piece of Baltimore, could live in my community, can get space, can have new schools, can have a little bit of yard, can see the lake, can go to the golf course." But if we, if you do it this way, just like with no guardrails, what we're gonna get is a lot of multi-unit properties because the back of my backyard is 75 feet deep. Okay, that's just my backyard. I've got three floors. Don't do this.
Thank you. We heard from Ms. Joan Floyd at the last hearing. We'll hear from her again. And before you begin. Okay. Is there another one up there? Okay, so we're, I have a third sheet here, and Julianne is collecting whatever we have out in the hallway. Anybody who has not signed up at this point, we're gonna close the sign up for public testimony at this point. Ms. Floyd, you have the floor.
Joan Floyd, the numbers don't lie, so let's do some math and take a look at some numbers. When you add fourplexes to the R2 and R3, you're not only adding multifamily development, you're permitting it at a density of 35 units per acre, which is greater than what is currently allowed in the R5 and R6 Roehhouse zones. When you add fourplexes to the R4, you're permitting multifamily development at a density of 58 units per acre, the same as what is currently allowed in the R8 Roehhouse zone. In the R6, a fourplex on a 1,500-square-foot lot represents a permitted density of 116 units per acre, twice what is currently allowed in the R8. In the R8, a fourplex on a 750-square-foot lot represents a permitted multifamily density of 232 units per acre. That is development at a density higher than the permitted multifamily density of the extremely dense R10 zone, higher than the C1, C2, C3, and C4 zones, which now allow very dense multifamily development as a result of the 2017 code. 232 units per acre is also higher than the IMU, the OR, even higher than the TOD-1 zone. The only zones with a higher multifamily density are the other transit-oriented zones and Port Covington, which has no limits and no required yards, and boy, does it show. Under Bill 250066, a developer can use this new density of 232 units per acre to build a row of fourplexes in the R8 zone, four stories tall, each one covering an entire small lot. It would exceed the densities of all those other zoning districts. Maybe that's what City Hall really wants. Maybe that's what you want new city blocks to look like and feel like, tall and dark, with no outdoor space. But you just don't suddenly impose development at 116 or 232 units per acre onto Roehhouse blocks that were designed and built at a quarter of that density and are still providing good, single-family homes today. Thank you.
Thank you. I cannot read this name. I'm sorry. Yes.
So I'll give my testimony, my paper testimony afterwards because...
We'll take your written testimony after. Go ahead, you've got two minutes.
Because I don't believe we should have more parking lots or more splitting up of houses.
Do you want to begin your testimony?
Yes, I would.
Okay, great. Just speaking into the microphone.
My name is Shail Seltzer. I live in Liberty Square, where it's between 72% and 84% rentals, where my house is the only single-family detached house on the block, where my neighbors next door have three front doors, where a house that has asbestos that they painted over and cut and put wood boards to make it look like it's not asbestos. I'm beyond firmly against this because you all aren't doing the real work. The real work is we have a climate crisis. The real work is that between 1 and 2 millimeters, Baltimore is sinking. The real work is to make Baltimore a sponge city. A sponge city is a permeable city. What this bill does is add weight with more walls and more cement, et cetera, et cetera. You passed, you passed, you made a law saying you can build to your perimeters, which means my neighbors could build a whole new house or just add some ugly thing to the, all the way to the back. What kind of living standard is that? What kind of life is it when instead of having 10 people living, there's now 50 people on both sides of my house? And the thing is, my neighborhood has four huge, empty, multi-story apartment buildings across the street from Jewett Hill Park and a short walk to Mont Damon Mall, where there's the subway, et cetera, mall, et cetera. So don't tell me there's no apartments available for anybody in a good neighborhood because we're the hottest neighborhood. If there is a house for sale, it goes in one day. And Commissioner Kennedy, I sent her those statistics.
Thank you, Ms. Seltzer.
So seawalls fail. So don't think you're gonna save Baltimore with seawalls. The world is building the equivalent of a whole New York City every month. If we don't start reducing and body carbon emissions now, we'll literally build ourselves out of any possibility of meeting the global carbon reduction goals needed to halt climate change. Carbon Leadership Forum.
Thank you, Ms. Seltzer.
Penis.
Your time is up. Thank you.
This tells you that Baltimore isn't only sinking, it's collapsing.
Ms. Seltzer.
We cannot afford to build any more houses right now, any more skyscrapers. We have to stop and become a sponge city.
Thank you. Amy Davis? Amy Davis? I'll move on. Paula Platt? Joanne Braun?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Joanne Brown, and I'm from the Ashburton community of Baltimore City. I'm gonna speak from my heart. I'm against Bill 250066, and I concur with all the others who have spoken this morning. They've done a lot of homework. I'm very new to this. This is my first time being in here. But I have a home in Ashburton that I'm renovating. It was my parents' home. They lived there over 50-some years. My dad passed there. He was 103 years old. I'm putting money into that home to renovate it. It is old, but it has good bones. I would hate to see multi-dwelling units in our community. We already have one at the corner of Liberty and Cedar Dale Road. I call all the time because of derelict vehicles that are parked there, whether they are vehicles that belong to residents or people just parked there. It's just an eyesore. I have a rental property that's next door to me. The owner lives in Columbia. He has no responsibility for the property. I'm always calling about the property. The back is overgrown. The tenants that live there, they park derelict cars there. They're broken down. I have to call in order for them to remove them. They use the scooters and bring scooters in the neighborhood and just leave them parked. I call about that as well. So in concurrence with the other residents that have spoken from the other communities, I feel that it's very detrimental to have multi-dwelling communities and multi-dwelling housing in our communities. We have a couple down the street. One of them is, I guess, is a group home or a senior assistant living home. It looks very, it's terrible looking on the outside. I don't know who owns it, but that's just one example, like two examples with the rental property that is next to me and the one that's down the street that looks like it needs some work. So it just brings another eyesore to our community. Yes, I agree that there are properties that need to be built or restored for other people, but like the other person just said, there are other communities, not other communities, but there are other dwellings that are tall and that would suffice for multi-dwelling renovations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you, Ms. Braun. I'll call the previous two names one more time just for good measure, and then I'll cross them off. Amy Davis, I didn't hear, I didn't see anybody. Okay, Paula Platt. Okay, I'm checking them off the list. We have one more sheet here. Uh, it looks like we have a couple people we've already heard from. Christina Schopper-Deveraux.
Hi, I'm Christina Schopper-Deveraux. I'm an urban planner and a staff attorney at Community Law Center. I have already submitted testimony about the lack of process and the lack of provision for affordability in this bill and the fact that the bill compounds racial harm rather than fixing it. I want to focus for a minute on the equity issue here. In 2019, Michael Manville, Pablo McConan, and Michael Lenz published an article in the Journal of the American Planning Association titled "It's Time to End Single-Family Zoning." This article focused on the racist and classist history of R1 zoning throughout the country. It encouraged planners throughout the country to eliminate R1 zoning. This bill does not eliminate R1 zoning. This bill further burdens the communities that are already the most dense communities in Maryland with the development goals of a council that has not sought the opinions of the people who live in those communities. 21% of the residential land in Baltimore is R1. 11% is R8. The argument in the JAPA article that I cited was that we need to use more of that R1 land to house people. This bill does not do that. In conjunction with Council Bill 64, this bill places more burden for development on the already densest neighborhoods in Baltimore. 64 eliminates bulk regulations in R8. It barely touches them in R1. If we actually want to resolve or address the racist real estate landscape of this city, let's do it. But this does not do it. Community Law Center implores you to engage with the people who live in the neighborhoods who have continually been silenced. They are speaking to you today. They are asking to engage in this process. They have written to you in opposition. It's in your, in the file. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Landers.
Mr. Chairman, before you start my time, I have some testimony from Carolyn Carey, who is the president of the Parkway Community Association. She has been a candidate for this one. She sent it to me late last night. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, what do we know about this bill? Not a whole lot. We've heard it's going to improve affordable housing, give more choice, won't reduce homeownership, will fuel growth, will increase the number of multifamily units available, and it's absolutely essential to the city. But it hasn't been studied. There's been no modeling that's, that's been done. In fact, there's been so little study that the planning department recommendation said, "Well, we kind of like the aspirations of this bill, but we think we ought to collect data so that in three years we can decide whether or not we like it and it has an impact." That is not a prescription for good planning or good communities, folks. We've also heard from the chairman of the committee, and he says, and I quote, "Your block is not changing. There's little chance that your block, one house on your block, will change." False! The mayor put out a publication that is completely misleading. It says, "Most homes will not be affected." The vast majority of Baltimore homes are under 1,500 square feet. The planning department's own analysis shows that any lot in an R3, R1, R4, R5 district can be converted, not just converted, but a new fourplex can be constructed. And here's the planning department, a photo. Each house next to this fourplex wouldn't qualify because it's under 1,500 square feet. But what this bill does is it detaches the density from the size of the, the, uh, the house. It attaches it to the size of the lot. Every single lot in my neighborhood could now become a fourplex.
Thank you, Mr. Landers.
Study this bill. Do something smart and postpone it. The other thing I want to make point...
Thank you, Mr. Landers.
I heard no discussion about the law department's recommendation or consideration that this is a comprehensive zoning bill.
Thank you, Mr. Landers.
They, they said it in their law opinion. This, this committee did not even discuss it or consider it.
Thank you.
Let's hear some discussion about the major impact of this bill.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome. Mr. or Mrs. Kane? With a K?
Hi. Hi. I'm not much of a public speaker, and I've never been to City Hall until today.
Welcome.
I have a lot of concerns about this bill. I was wondering if any of you have experience living in a, um, a corporate shell company landlord situation? Or have you ever lived next door to one? Just a show of hands. Okay. So I live next door to a corporate shell company situation. And there's a family that lives in the house next door to me, and they are struggling. They are struggling in every way a family could possibly struggle. And they're welcome to be my neighbor. I want to support them. They have challenges that they themselves can't, for whatever reason, rise to meet. There are substance issues. There's a lot going on there. Their smoke detectors beeped for like six months. I gave them batteries to put into their smoke detector. They didn't put the batteries in. The smoke detectors continued to beep, and they, they, they never replaced the batteries that I had given them. So I called their shell company landlord, and I tried to reach them and say, "Can you please step in? This house has no smoke detectors. We have two to three adults in this unit smoking and a baby living there. I live next door, attached. This place could catch on fire. There's no smoke detectors. Who am I going to talk to?" The shell company, and I researched it. My mom researched it. We tried to figure out, who owns this place? You can't find them. Are they in Texas? Are they in New Jersey? Are they in the Caribbean? We can't tell. The guy's name, we can't figure it out. You can't track these people down. And then we want to entice these people to buy more property in our city? They trade our, our house, our housing stock as if it's just an asset. To them, they don't care the condition of the place. They're, they're going to leave us high and dry. They're going to gut this city. They're going to buy a bunch of property, and then they're going to stiff us.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Mr. Lou Fields?
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Uh, at least this is good government here today. My name is Louis Fields. I've been a resident of Baltimore for almost 70 years. I live in Zone, the 9th District, which is Councilman Bullock's district. I also serve on the Baltimore branch of the NAACP, the Economic Development Committee. I'm also a block captain in my neighborhood, which is Evergreen Protective Association. And today, I think, um, the audience, the speakers have said just about everything they need to be said. I just want to say I think this is a bad bill, and I would ask each of you who are voting not to vote it out of committee. Let's just kill it now. I live in the area where the Amtrak train station is, right there at West Baltimore, the highway to nowhere. There is some great housing needs in that area. So I would ask this particular committee and the Housing Committee to look into what's happening in that area right there at Route 40 West. In closing, I think everyone who has testified against this bill, I think for the most part we have a consensus that the public is definitely against this bill. So we would ask that you, our elected representatives, would listen to the public. It doesn't happen often here at City Hall, but in this case, I think it's very important that you listen to what the people have said today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Field. Mr. and Mrs. Katarba.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm going to speak to you from my heart. My husband and I have lived in our beautiful home in the Arcadia neighborhood for 43 years. Our block has become so diverse, much more so than when we moved there. A lot of the original families were still there. They were children when they came. And we love our neighbors. We, we, I won't even go into it, but every, um, every demographic is represented in our one-block-long street. I'm speaking to you, to each of you, as your neighbor, and I'm really speaking from the heart. And most of the people, I know some of the people in this room are neighbors. We need to aim higher. The package of bills are aiming low. We can do so much better. We've heard about examples of other cities that have implemented legislation and other complimentary measures to support affordable housing. I think everyone in this room is for that. Let's do it a better way. Let's do it a better way. What we don't have, what is lacking in this package of bills, first and foremost, is the engagement of your neighbors. They haven't been involved. They haven't been brought into this process. And the other thing that we are lacking, profoundly lacking, is a sense of vision. We don't know what the roadmap is. If you head somewhere and you don't have a map, you're not going to get there. We don't have a vision of how our city will look, how do we want it to look down the road when we're all gone, whether we want to leave, whether we want our city to look like. And we don't know how this will work. So I'm going to stay within my two minutes. I urge you, let's, let's all try again, all of us. Let's try again and do this the right way so that we will be the model for the country.
Thank you, Ms. Katarba.
Thank you for your time.
Is Mr. Katarba coming up as well? No? Okay. Terrence Artis? Um, I think that's what this is. Terrence Artis? Okay. Jim Prost?
Good morning. My name is Jim Prost. I've testified previously on the bill. I'd like to limit this, and I stand by my previous testimony in opposition to the bill. I'd like to just comment on what transpired on your meeting on the 20th and about the mayor's announcement on the 28th. On the 20th, the mayor's office said this is part of a broad plan that would allow rental housing in all neighborhoods. The law department somehow had no comments, although they had prepared, and it wasn't distributed at the meeting, they had prepared a memo that said this could be construed as a comprehensive rezoning and that they clearly, the city clearly had not followed the state and city requirements for a comprehensive rezoning, as was noted in all the statements that were made today. On November 28th, three days before this hearing, a Friday, and six days before the potential city council vote, the mayor set out this integrated land use thing, and he misrepresented this as, quote, "modest changes, giving homeowners more flexibility." I did a quick look at what the damn thing said, and what it said was, not counting expanding smaller units, you could convert up to 40,203 single-family homes to up to 93,233 rental units. That is a comprehensive rezoning that goes all over the city. Combine it with your change in, in lot coverage and your elimination of parking. It's just a obscene comprehensive rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Prost.
Thank you.
Uh, last on the opposition list here. Ian. Ian Mangum?
Good morning to the council.
Morning.
I just want to say I understand what this bill is trying to do, create more housing for, I believe it's, uh, medium and low-income families. I can tell you now, we live in a new age of politics. You cannot create bills like this without having the other types of bills to plan for bad actors and people who will abuse the system and take advantage. You think just because you allow people to split houses up into multiple units that they'll charge reasonable prices? They will charge every single sub-dwelling the full price for a full dwelling of that house. You can't create something like this without also creating some type of rent control throughout the city. I live in the Forest Park neighborhood. I've seen illegal multi-dwelling neighborhoods throughout that area in rental homes. You think those people are paying, what, $400 a room? They are not. They are paying full price. They will have you living four floors. Every person maybe has a floor, has a shared kitchen. Everyone's paying between $1,500, $2,000 maybe, just because they can. In addition, doing this will reward the very type of people that this city, the citizens and the government have said that we can't stand for the longest time. There are people who have sat and let, sat and let our city turn into blight because entire neighborhoods have been empty because non-Baltimoreian investors are waiting for an opportunity to gouge every single bit of money out of a neighborhood. You have people who live in Texas, outside of this, even outside of Baltimore. They're waiting for this so they can just create this. They do not deserve to be rewarded in this way. Our city has been left empty because they have been waiting for an opportunity to just cram any and everybody in houses. Do not reward them. Do not press this forward because we have not put in the framework to protect the same people that we actually say this bill is meant to help. If you want these people to live in a single room paying $2,000 for a room, that is what you will get. Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question. Are virtual participants going to be allowed to testify?
No, not today. No, not today. Wayne, I didn't see you signed up. Are you planning to test? You did, I didn't see you on the list, but I saw your eye here. All right, we're going to conclude here with Wayne Carson.
Good morning, council. My name is Wayne Carson. I'm a lifelong Baltimore city resident, residing in Hamilton Hills for the past 43-plus years. I'm here today to voice my opposition to Council Bill 25-0066. This bill is a direct attack on single-family homeownership, allowing developers virtually unfettered access and ability to convert single-family homes into multifamily dwellings. This would increase developers' holds on properties in Baltimore City. There would be more renters who become victims of these predatory and often absentee owners. This will supposedly lead to more affordable housing without any real research proving this out. What it absolutely will do is put homeownership further out of reach for many. Availability of housing stock will only get worse. It comes as no surprise that this attack is led by Councilman Dorsey, who indicated that he would rather rent than own a home. I doubt that sentiment is held by many people in this city. Homeownership is still the American dream and one of the best ways to build generational wealth. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we're going to go on to testimony in support. Before we do that, I do just want to say, welcome, Delegate Roth. Thank you for joining us here today. I really, I made multiple announcements about asking people to sign up. I made multiple announcements about asking people to sign up, to testify. We have four sheets here. I collected them on three different occasions to make sure people had opportunity to sign up. I will take your one unsigned-up testimony, okay?
Thank you, council.
Yours is the only one I will take. Thank you, sir. You have two minutes.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Charles Williams, and I am a resident of Marble Hill. I'm a first-time homeowner, first-generation homeowner. My mother's never owned, my father's never owned. I'm the first one to own a home. And so when I moved to Marble Hill, I was excited. I later learned that not only did I move to Marble Hill, but I was able to move into one of the most historic neighborhoods in the nation. On top of that, I was able to move in one of the most historic homes in the nation, in Marble Hill. And so later after moving there, and I'm speaking from the heart, I've written numerous emails to council, so you guys should have my formal letter of opposition, but I just wanted to point out that where I live, we deal with density every day. When I wake up to go to work, density hits me right in the face. Councilman Blanchard, I mean Blanchard has been to my house. He knows exactly what I'm speaking about. He's been to my house eight o'clock in the morning, and he sees what we deal with in my block. And so we're opposing this bill because we see what we're dealing with right now. We have, we're in between two large churches, we're in between a corner store, we're in between a daycare center, and so in my block, there are only six homeowners. There are 22 parcels, but only six of those are owned by homeowners. Not opposed renters at all, but it's just that we feel that if you take every block and you blanket them with the same zoning bill, it will impact others more severely than in other neighborhoods. Our neighborhood, we are really struggling. I feel good that my councilman has been to my house, and he sees, he knows exactly what I'm speaking about. So I ask you please to reconsider and to please consider us when you're making this vote.
Thank you.
We're doing our best, and we'd like to have the support of the city council. Thank you very much for letting me testify.
Okay, we will go to Dele Akiriyade? Please tell me I got that close to right.
No, you butchered it.
I'm sorry, man.
So my name is Dele Akiriyade. So I might be a bit naive, but you know, I am for the bill. I'm a resident of Ms. Porter or Mrs. Porter's district, and I also own a lot in Councilman Gray's district. So, I mean, I say this to say that I am a Baltimoreian, and I am a young developer, actually, as well. And my initial thought when I saw, you know, the bill, 250066, was this is an opportunity for Baltimore. I mean, to be fair, and I mean absolutely no disrespect at all, but I think the majority of the opposers here are quite elderly. A lot of them are a bit older. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize. I'm 32, I'm 32 years old. I'm 32 years old. Again, I'm a homeowner in Ms. Porter's district, and then also own a lot in Councilman Gray's district. And when I saw the bill, I thought this is an opportunity for Baltimore to expand, get some incoming residents into the city. And also, in building, the lot that I own is in an R3 district, and I already have plans to build a single-family home. It's an 8,400-square-foot lot. I was going to build a 3,000-square-foot home. To be honest, me and my young family, we don't need quite 3,000 square feet. So when I saw this bill, I thought, okay, yeah, I can do whether it's a duplex, a triplex, or a quadplex. And I think one of the underappreciated things about this bill is a path of homeownership, I think, is created with this bill. As opposed to building a 3,000-square-foot home, I can build four 2,000-square-foot homes, and a condominium declaration allows those units to be sold. They don't have to, they don't have to be rented, they can be sold, you know? So I think, again, I meant no disrespect, you know, but I think if we're also thinking future focus, you know, I think, you know, cities are meant to change. This is in the middle of the nowhere county, so...
Thank you. Appreciate it. Alston Harrison? I'm sorry, I'm having trouble reading this here. Miss, somebody Harrison from Park Avenue?
Okay, well, this is, I'm actually Sue Fenimore. I'm speaking for my husband and partner and myself. Just by way of background, I was in the financial services industry for 25 years and worked as a financial advisor, and now I'm a property owner. I'm sorry, you can't, oh, sorry. My background is, I was a financial advisor, money manager, and now I'm a property owner, landlord, manager. And I just want to, with all due respect, try to allay some of the concerns about renters, what renters do, okay? I understand that for probably about 60 years, homeownership was, you know, the mainstay of building your own personal wealth. 2008 taught a lot of people that that's just not true. Homeownership can be a big mistake for anyone that is not planning on being in an area for five or 10 years and have the flexibility to get out when they need to, as opposed to being forced out in a really bad market. So it's no guarantee that you're going to have a wonderful financial future with homeownership. We, as landlords, we're seeing incredibly more mobility. You know, there's remote working. People just move from job to job. It isn't like you stay with the same company for 30 years, or that you know where you're going to go. People come to our building because they just want to see what Baltimore's like. They can work anyplace. There's a huge amount of experimentation in terms of living in Baltimore, and I think that we need to attract that vibrant culture. Family size, household size. Back when this city was built, the average household size was seven people. In the 1900s, it was four and three-fourths people, and today, it's two and a half.
Thank you.
So that's the size of habitability you need. Thank you.
Thank you. Will Fetter? Can we please, if anybody wants to have any conversation, can do it outside of this room. Will Fetter?
Do you know how many empty apartments the city already has?
Will Fetter? We're not, hold on, we're not going to have a conversation in here while people are testifying. We're going to have quiet in here while people are testifying. Thank you. Becky, you have two minutes.
Good morning. I'm Becky Witt. I used to work here, pretty recently. Three years ago, the BMCA voted to end the consent docket, and as I was working through how to implement that change, I talked to a lot of my colleagues, some of whom are here today. And again and again, I heard the same thing. They said, "You can't end the consent docket because development will grind to a halt." And I rolled my eyes at them, and I said, "Okay, drama queen. The council will see the outcomes if development grinds to a halt, and if they don't like those outcomes, they will change the law." And then they told me that it took a decade to pass Transform Baltimore, a lot more than four years, that it was actually actively in the council. It took many years before that. They said it will take another decade to change the code in any meaningful way. And I said, "That can't be true." You know, I refuse to believe that that is true. If that's true, I have to leave the city and/or, I guess, or run for council myself because I can't live in a world where that's true, both of which sound equally miserable to me. But it looked like it was true for a couple years. However, here we are in 2025. We have, things have changed. And I would rather have a council that we have here today that sees a problem, takes steps to fix it, and keeps it moving. It shouldn't take a decade to change the law. It's not called, it's not rushing its efficiency in seeing problems and working to fix them. And you are all democratically elected to do the job, you're the only ones who can do it, and I'm here to strongly support the bill and a little bit to gloat because I was right. With enough time and patience, it turns out that the council can make change, and I strongly support this bill and request your yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to, that concludes public testimony today. We're going to take a very brief recess so that I can use the restroom, and then we will move on to the rest of the work session here today. Thank you. Okay, folks, we have some reporters in the back of the room trying to do interviews in the room. We have a bunch of people in conversation in the room. We need everybody to sit quiet or clear out. Okay, we've taken substantial public testimony here today. We spent an hour or so with this. It was the second time. The committee has a bill before it, and for consideration. I've heard a number of people bring up the idea of process. It is the case that any member of the city council, the mayor's office, can cause a bill to be brought before the city council, and once it is before the city council, we, it is there for our consideration. It is the committee's responsibility to make a recommendation to the full council. Today, we have no intention of voting on this bill today, but I am intent that the committee here should work to make some progress toward being able to make a recommendation to the full city council. The bill was introduced in May as part of a package of five bills, the rest of which we determined to move forward while giving additional time for this bill to be considered. We've received a considerable volume of public testimony on the bills in the package individually and collectively, both for and against, in writing and in person at the hearing held on November 20th and here today. And certainly, we've all heard directly from people, individuals, groups, in the course of our daily work over the last six and a half months since the bill was introduced. We have heard certain common themes of concerns from folks. We will have some discussion, I expect, about those common themes, those common concerns, and what we think about them, what can be done to address them. We have some amendments that folks have brought to us. We have some from Councilman Parker, we have some from the administration, and we have lost a couple of our agency reps here. I hope they're going to be coming back in. I see we have Tyler Schnella from the mayor's office coming back in. So my thought here is that we have six of our committee members here present today. I want to start by offering each of the committee members a couple of minutes, similar to the two minutes that we offered to everybody in the public, just to, you know, if you want, there's no obligation here, but I would certainly like to hear from committee members. I think it would be healthy for us to be able to kick off this conversation with a little bit of input from committee members as to their general feeling at the moment, and any specific concern that they may have. If there's anything that, you know, for them could be done if they're not already in support of this bill, then what could be done in order to gain their support, or if not, nothing, you know? But I'd just like to, I think it would be healthy for us to begin this. And I'll just preface this with, it's actually unusual for us as committees on the council to be like deeply deliberative and weirdly sitting here shoulder to shoulder, having this kind of discourse that I hope that we can have here today. I've been on this council for nine years, and we don't hash it out a whole lot right here in public. But I think, you know, we have something important in front of us. Obviously, people have a lot of feelings about it, and I'd just try, I'd like to try for us to have a sort of discourse here. Does this sound reasonable to the committee members, fair? Can I start with the vice chair, Middleton?
Yes. First of all, I'm not, I'm not speaking for the committee, but I think I do want to say in light of that last hearing, council members might be feeling a little guarded when words are, and meaning of words are taken out of context and changed to something else. And we're particularly talking about renters and homeowners sharing space basically in same communities, and because of certain things like weak code enforcement, and it was mentioned here, group home-type facilities. It's, you know, people are, you heard some of that here, and people are upset, vulnerable. I heard a lot about, again, and it's come up over and over again, community engagement. There's different kinds of community engagement. Baltimore is a very unique city. This, again, is a very serious bill. Yes, I was a part of Transform Baltimore. It did take four to five years. The talk happened maybe years before of how, it took time to figure out how to share and educate the community. So you don't hear a whole lot about it because the process was a very good process. And I say it again, this process was not a very good process. I also, you know, we also heard from, I guess, a couple of landlord investors, still problems with, you know, the things that they said were some of the controversy of what some of our testimony you heard before that, just, those are things that have to be discussed and ironed out. I heard that, we keep hearing comprehensive laws and zoning from the state. We have to be careful and look at that. It would be nice to hear... It would be nice to hear what the state feels about this bill. I don't know if we got any testimony from that, but that needs to be shared publicly For me, this has just really become worse than what it could be. Most of, from the testimony, they shared just problems that they will see in the future. And this, these problems have come from residents, homeowners, that have lived in these, black homeowners, that have lived in these communities for a long time. Some, and one person came representing homeowners that have taken over their parents' home that, you know, they grew up in. Parents are gone, but they're in that home and they like the home as is. I've talked to a lot of single homeowners that live in a block and they, they like that atmosphere. They like that feel. They want to keep things as is. They're seeing that if one of those houses sell, it's going to be a tripling effect. And it's, you know, there's just so many misunderstandings, misconceptions. And again, it goes back to the way the engagement happened with this bill. And I agree, we need to slow down. We need to do more studies. We, there's, there's just so many missing pieces that our constituents do not know and we are here on behalf of them.
Thank you. Anybody? Councilman Porter?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I'd say about like last week, I, I have, you know, I shared with the mayor's administration about my opposition of this bill. It is not for lack of vision. It is for really understanding the marrying of community resources and engagement and also government resources in order to ensure that we have a balanced approach to zoning. So some of the issues that are brought up was lack of comprehensive code enforcement. That's a very big issue that we currently have now, the lack of capacity that we have of inspectors and DHCD. In order to enforce something like this would be an incredible strain on the agency. Number two, when we're talking about the lack of oversight, particularly within my sphere of influence, public health, when we look at substance abuse and recovery homes, the lack of oversight and the current undergoing of the changing of COMAR 1063 as it relates to how those clinics, substance abuse and group homes are regulated at the state level is still undergoing state discussion. And so I don't feel comfortable with making a change with regard to the zoning of how we're doing that in Baltimore City until we have respective definitive guidance, updated guidance, as it relates to community engagement from the state level. Number four, is that number three or four? Number four. I'll say number four. Number four, and Vice President Middleton talked about this, when we talk about community engagement, I think that, you know, there has to be more stakeholder engagement, not just within particular communities, but a vast majority of communities that this will impact. And the conversation of how this impedes black communities, I think, has to be elevated a lot more. When we are seeing the pathways to wealth and ownership for black communities, homeownership is that option. And it's no disrespect to renters. I was a renter. You know, renters take care of their homes too. I want to acknowledge that renters do take care of their homes. This is not an aspect of renters versus homeowners. This is really looking at zoning and how, if not done in the proper way, not marrying government resources and existing capacities of agencies, we can really turn the ship awry. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Gray?
Yep. First, I just want to thank everyone who came out today before all the letters, calls, text messages. I really think it's important, not for just this topic, for any topic that we have, public discourse. We're at a really pivotal point now, point in our country where having it and having, making sure that the people weigh in is very important. When it comes to this bill, from a philosophy standpoint, I am not opposed. I think it is a matter of respect for a lot of people. You know, not every person that's going to come into your neighborhood is going to be a bad person. Not every person who wants to move into historically black neighborhood, white neighborhood, will be the opposite person. Not every renter is going to be a bad person that moves into your neighborhood. And so if we can just scale back on both sides from demonizing the other side, I think this is a very important conversation. But one of the things that I want to really emphasize is the need for process. And looking at the three previous bills that were passed, one of the things, a lot of folks that I was hearing from in my district was the lack of process and they felt like things were rushed. And so if we pass those three and now we're looking to do this consequently in like a month's time, I think we just need to slow down. Because at this moment right now with all the discourse, I'm in good conscience, cannot move forward with the bill. But this is a question of process, once again, and not policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Person, thank you, everybody, for the conversation. Thanks to my colleagues for our deep engagement here, which I know extends far beyond this room or these committee hearings. I want to start by saying there were, there were two requests that I had made of our agency partners at our last hearing. I just wanted to remind us of those and also add, add a tweak to one of them if I could. One was an analysis of the restrictive covenants that exist across the city and where the impact of this bill would be limited because of those covenants that exist. So I had asked for that, that it, for my part, I couldn't really weigh, come to a final decision on a bill like this without actually having that information and being able to map that out and knowing what the impact would look like. So just as a reminder of that, the second one, I'd asked for an analysis of the conversions that had taken place in residential zones. The one I did was back to like the 2019 calendar, or 2020 calendar year, 2019 council year, but along those lines. In particular, I wanted to add a tweak to that. It'd be good to know how many of those had, those properties went through conversions, had a VBN at the time that they went through the conversion process or had a VBN at some point, just to like help us track not only kind of where those were taking place and homeownership or not homeownership and the size of those lots, the size of those properties, but also to what extent it was advancing our vacant strategy or not, the current conversions that are taking place. So just to add to that. On the bill side, kind of my approach to legislation like this or anything else is while it's before us, I'm going to try to, try to figure out ways to improve it to the best, the best that I can, which is why I offered amendments and will continue to work on those with feedback from my colleagues and agencies and others, but the mayor's office. So I'll keep, I'll keep working to make this bill as strong as possible until the point that it's in its final form and then we can decide, I can decide, we can decide whether it's worth passing or not. So, but at the moment, my goal is to try to make it better and so I'm going to keep offering amendments and, and offering arguments to my colleagues to try to, to advance those amendments and get there. The way I see the bills that currently stands, this is a tool, right? It's, it's not, it's somewhat value neutral in that sense, or it's a question of what you do with it or what the possibilities are that folks would do with it, certainly individual property owners, but also those looking to invest in the city. I don't, I don't think that the tool is good on its own. I think some of the initial sponsors of this bill think that the tool itself, that the policy itself exists in a world outside of the reality of Baltimore City and that it is just good. And therefore, because it is good, we should do it and we maybe shouldn't even spend too much time thinking about the particularities because it is in and of itself good. I don't think it is. I think it's a potentially useful tool to advance the goals laid out by the sponsors. But I think there are two ways then to approach amendments to it. One is to say, okay, so this is a tool that could be good if we used it to advance some of our community development agendas, whether that's around vacancy or density, whether it's around addressing historic inequities in investment in certain communities or pathways to homeownership or public transit access or things like that. Is there a way this tool can be used to further a community development agenda to help us build the kind of city we want to build? And is there a way then to, to apply this tool in ways that advance a more particular agenda and make it more likely to have positive outcomes rather than neutral or negative ones, right? So there's a way to, to use this tool in positive ways. The other way, and we heard plenty of this from, from colleague, from community members here, is there a way or ought we, or do we have a responsibility to try to prevent some of the negative uses or negative consequences of this tool that we can foresee or could reasonably foresee, again, by making amendments that would either, either add things to mitigate potential harmful effects or restrict its use to prevent those harmful effects? And so I think those are the, those, that's my approach to amendment process here. I think that the history of where conversions have happened, that this would make easier, is a really good indication of, of what would likely happen from a conversion standpoint, setting aside new construction and things like that. And I think those are all, those are shaped by restrictive covenants that exist. We can look at the history of those conversions and also just the math. There are some neighborhoods where the property is so expensive that multifamily conversions and the rent you could get, it might not math as well. And so we can, we can predict, even though the tools that currently exist applies to the whole city, the impact will not be evenly felt across the whole city. And so we can make some reasonable inferences based on history and based on just the math of doing these kinds of development projects about where those, where those can be. And I think we can speak honestly about that and decide if that's what we want to see or not, right? I'll return to this. I spoke at the, at the last hearing and simply said, listen, the first district, thankfully, I'm excited, has been one of the most high-growth parts of the city for a very long time. We'd love to see that kind of growth, residential, commercial development, all other kinds of growth, diverse communities, international migration occurring and spreading throughout the rest of East Baltimore and across the entire city. And our growth has been the reuse of vacant or historic buildings that no longer serve their purpose, small and large, including Crown, Corke and Seal, which is, you know, has closed and has the potential to be, add hundreds of new housing units as well as commercial space and a huge lift to, to Greektown and Verbor Salem and Highland Town. So projects like that have really driven our growth, as well as new construction on vacant lands, which the city has tons of and we ought to be encouraging as much as possible. And then infill development on small parcels in existing residential communities that can, that can have innovative and creative projects and help, help us achieve the growth we're looking for while also supporting the continued health of those communities. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Blanchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've had the opportunity to talk to a lot of folks about this bill and this package of bills. Talked to every neighborhood association in my district. I've talked to multiple neighborhood associations outside the district that, you know, if they reached out to request it. I had a good conversation on Tuesday evening with a bunch of the, I think, stronger opponents of the bill. I think I met a couple of folks who were in there today for the first time at that. And the, I was a strong supporter of the bill in its current form when it was introduced and I'm a strong supporter of the bill in its current form now. The way that I have personally absorbed the feedback that I've gotten from folks who have concerns is this is a very important thing that we should be doing. Adjacent to that, there are a bunch of issues that we really do need to be addressing. Rental licensing, perhaps maybe the most frequent one that comes up, but also multi-unit trash collection, a problem that I randomly know very, very well from my previous job. That's something I'm working with DPW and also me working with DCD to work on draft legislation to improve that already. Parking enforcement and parking management, both for my bill and for the package of bills as a whole, like how we can make that make, you know, more sense without artificially stopping people from living in a neighborhood just because we're trying to create a fake abundance of on-street curb parking. The restricted covenants is something that, you know, I don't know what tools we have available to us as a city to repeal, but I'm very interested in delving into that and happy to be a part of that, more than happy to be a part of that conversation. I pointed this out at the last hearing. Homeownership, right? Homeownership and there are, we should be looking at, like making it easier to build starter homes in the city that are more likely for people to actually, right? The missing middle of stuff for people to buy, make it easier to build condos. I think we had a gentleman talk something about, not all of these have to be apartments, but there are some rules, particularly on the state level, that do make it harder for these things to be condos instead of apartments, right? We should be actively working to look at, hey, how can we have a more housing, more homeownership approach on top of this set of bills, which, once again, I'm very strongly supportive of? So there's a lot of other important things that I feel totally in agreement that we should be addressing. I appreciate all the feedback I've gotten and I just want to assure the folks that I've spoken with that I am actively working and in some cases have already drafted legislation to work on those things. The, the question at the end of the day, when we look at, you know, what, what the outcome we're likely to see by this, I think the question really boils down to, should an 800-square-foot apartment be legal everywhere in the city? I, I think that that is the ultimate question we should be considering and I think the answer is, is very, very much so, yes. When we talk about, I have spoken about affordability at length since we introduced this and the handout that I give when I go to neighborhood associations, that's, that's at the heart of it. Picture in your head, you have a 24-square-foot, four-bedroom home, you have a 800-square-foot, one-bedroom apartment, like which of those is going to be more affordable? It's, it's very obviously going to be the apartment. There was a, somebody gave public testimony opposition and they had some concerns of in Forest Park. I Zillow apartment rentals in Forest Park and, I mean, everyone can do that, look it up, but it seems to be actually, they are, of course, on the more affordable side, which, which isn't a surprise. I've seen that in my district too. Smaller, smaller apartments, smaller homes are going to be more affordable than larger homes and we shouldn't make it illegal in the city to have that, or effectively illegal in the city to have that. The, so that's all that. I will say, I know that there had been some discussion for a while, heard it from the mayor's team, as well as the amendment that Councilman Parker had introduced. Good folks up in Bolton Hill had recommended that previously as well. Certainly, you know, I, I see where that idea of going two units by right, three and four conditional by board is coming from. Personally, something that I think we could be considering instead of that, if we can figure out how to do it, is to say, maybe those additional units have an AMI cap, right? Or, or say that, hey, like, we're hearing that people are skeptical that this is going to lead to more affordability. I am like super confident that this is going to lead to more affordability. I'm happy to talk in length with anyone who disagrees or agrees with me about it, but maybe we just bake the affordability into, into the legislation. And, and that might be, that's definitely something that, you know, I think we should be, should be looking at. And then lastly, I'm just going to say, you know, on one hand, like definitely the community engagement process wasn't as thorough as, you know, I think most people would, would appreciate and I totally get that. But to be honest, being totally honest here, the mayor has this recurring catchphrase of, you know, I always do the right thing even when it's not the popular thing. And I thought that that was like a, a nice like thing for him to say. When he introduced this bill, I was like, dang, he is really about that. And, and I think that, that, that shows a conviction that I really appreciate from the mayor on it. And I appreciate, you know, all my colleagues' thoughts, all the public's thoughts on it. Looking forward to continuing this conversation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll just echo what Councilman Blanchard just said. I was a very strong supporter of this bill and its introduction and a very strong supporter of this bill as it is today. And still, as it is, I like the bill just fine the way it is. I would support it if it came to a vote as it is. Because I've lived in Baltimore my whole life and it's really clear that we have assorted history when it comes to housing segregation and that the zoning code that we have today that this bill is looking to amend is the foundation of that sorted history of using law to segregate. And that the principal tool of using law to segregate is the division of types of housing from one another. That there isn't any science- That there isn't any science or public health or safety reason to segregate types of housing from one another, that if there was, then we would allow the same standards that we allow in row home neighborhoods everywhere else, that we would allow the same standards that we allow for multi-story, multifamily structures that we generally only see on commercial zone lot. We would allow that everywhere because it's safe and healthy in one place, it doesn't become safe and, it doesn't become unsafe and unhealthy by putting that same structure in another neighborhood. So there's no, there's no rooting in safety and health that underpins the zoning laws that we have. It's purely an act of segregation, willful segregation, using numbers and lines on pages to make it seem scientific or official in some way, but it's a pure act of segregation. And so we should run from that. We should, we should be doing everything that we can to dismantle that as a structure of discrimination and segregation. That I actually think that the proposal that we have is as unbelievably modest as could possibly be with respect to that, that, that the laws that we should have, that we, that we have today, which were written not in order to bring about this wonderful city that we have, but that were written after the city had already come into existence without any such laws, and then were put in place to lock in time what had already been built in the first quarter of the 20th century, that the laws were created so nothing could ever change ever again. That's exactly what our zoning laws are. They're a thing to lock us out of ever being able to change. And that's just not how the universe works. That's not how life works. That's not how cities grow and adapt and change over time. And so I think allowing for something a little bit different than what we presently allow under this system is a good thing. And the, I heard somebody earlier in their testimony talk about needing a vision, and I've said this before, I'll say it again, I envision a city where whatever size housing you need exists and is allowed to exist in any neighborhood that you might want to live in, that the same neighborhood that somebody stands here and says, I love my neighborhood, I don't want it to change at all. Somebody else says, I love your neighborhood, too. I would love for it to change a little bit so that I have the opportunity to live in that neighborhood as well. I can't afford to buy, don't have any need of, a whole home, and your neighborhood prohibits any form of housing other than a whole home. I want people to be able to find housing that suits their needs wherever they want to live in this city. And the current system that we have not only bars that from happening, but it segregates 85% of the residentially-zoned land. This was in the planning department's report to the Planning Commission. It broke down the different categories of use. And so if you look at the R1 through R6 categories, where effectively or literally no new housing can possibly come to exist anywhere that any housing already exists in those zones, you see that those take up 85% of the residentially-zoned land in the city, and they make up only 54% of the dwelling units in the city. And so when I also heard that we're not expanding R1 housing opportunity, that's just not true. The R1 properties are the biggest properties in the city and have the most opportunity under this law to potentially create more dwelling units on them in an area where it is outright prohibited today. And where, under the current system, when we say that no more housing can exist on that 85% of the residential zone land, R1 through R6, that means that if we are ever going to grow at all as a city, 100% of that growth must take place on only 15% of the residential zone land in the city. That's just a recipe for an impossibility of growth. There's just no path forward to grow if we're limited to only 15%, and those 15% happen to be the areas, the only areas, where we presently allow for residential conversion. And so they are already more likely to have already changed. And so it's actually far less than 15% of the land where we have any percent, any possibility of, of growing our population. Maybe it's more like 8%, relegating 100% of our possibility of growth to 8% of the residential zone land. We heard from Councilman Parker about the, the rate of growth that occurred in his district. At redistricting at the last couple of years ago, there were only two districts in the whole city that grew substantially. It was Councilman Parker's district, Councilman Blanchard's district. These are the two, these are two very highly densely populated areas that continue to have demand to grow in them because they are already highly densely populated, because that density of population attracts so much other beneficial neighborhood investment, that they become, because they have so much population, and they come, become the kind of neighborhoods that continue to want to attract more and more people to them, and that, and that then also attract the kind of businesses that employ people at the local level, not at a business that is three bus rides and 90 to 120 minutes away on public transit in some far-off place, but right there in the communities where people in this city live. And they are the neighborhoods where people really benefit from the kind of businesses that are locating in communities. But, as you also heard Councilman Parker say, that growth is happening not on residential land. It's happening on commercial properties, and it's happening on formerly industrial properties. And so that's not a recipe for success in all aspects, in all, all neighborhoods in the city. That's a very, very limited area in the city, and they happen to be somewhat prolific in the first district and in the 11th district. There's a lot of that conversion of formerly industrial property. What it ends up being is that we have a lot of housing that is growing in very high opportunity areas, like the first and the 11th district, and not a whole lot, and, and, and where we also see significant stewarding of new housing, like, income-restricted housing into areas of higher vacancy as well. And so we're still continuing to kind of stratify the city's population to high-income, high-opportunity, low-income, low-opportunity neighborhoods. That's, you know, and, and what this bill does, it says that instead of the system that we have right now, where opportunity can grow, or housing can grow in these very, very limited number of areas, and not at all in the vast majority of space in the city, that we apply the same rule across the board, that every neighborhood become a place where some amount of new housing can occur, can exist, and that we don't have to politicize it, that it doesn't have to be a public debate every time somebody wants to create any housing at all in any neighborhood in the city. And I won't go into all the economics of this, but the, the idea that substantial waves of change are happening as a result of simply allowing something that we prohibit presently, it just doesn't add up when you look at the economics of it, that buying big, fully livable houses at top-of-market value, because they're top-of-market because there isn't enough housing in the city, that we already have very inflated housing costs in the city, which is also the reason why people's property taxes have gone up, that it doesn't economically work to buy fully habitable, large homes, and then invest further in them to add kitchens, add bathrooms, add walls, add bedrooms, none of which were there before, and then yield the rents that would make that make sense economically, financially for the investment, any more than it makes sense for people to just tear houses down that are perfectly habitable. That's just not happening. You can already tear down a house in the R5 or R6 zoning category and build multifamily there by right. You don't have to come to the city council for an ordinance for conversion, you don't have to go to the zoning board for any of that. Multifamily is a by-right use in the R5 and R6 categories if you're building from the ground up, including tearing down structures and putting up a whole new structure in their place. And it is simply not happening. There is literally no record, no history of this happening at all. And so the likelihood that people are going to buy homes in any other neighborhood in the R4 category, or in the R2 category, or in the R3 category, and tear them down and put up new homes, is just far-fetched. What we'll, we'll see are houses that are in a depressed state, that are in a state of deterioration, that are in neighborhoods where people want to live, that they become more financially viable to renovate if we allow them to become something that doesn't already exist in the neighborhood, and in the process allow the neighborhood to accommodate a form of housing and a person's needs that it cannot meet presently. So I just, I just think very highly of this bill, and...
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Is this a dialogue or...
Yeah.
Okay.
Look, and I know, I know Councilman Middleton had something that she wanted to say in response of, you know, something from Councilman Parker. But I'll go to you first if you want to...
Yeah, I just, I just want to ask three things, so, oh, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Listening to you, Councilman Parker, I kept hearing that you said you see this as a tool, resource kind of bill. And I don't see it that way. I see that this, an ordinance is a law, and it's something that's put into place, and I don't see this bill as a resource. It's something that has to be done this way. I see it as power being taken away from the council, this process, which I don't like. I think this process that we are in charge of and responsible for is, has been a process that helps us as council members to know what's going on in our districts. We cannot rely on reports coming to us that we have to eventually call to make resolutions and call administration to, or that agency. It's adding more of that layer to what we do. And I also have been in Baltimore all of my life, for many, many, many years, and there's ways we need to, other ways where we need to reach out as far as engagement, even with amendments. And that's part of the reason why I agree with some of my colleagues, we need to slow it down, put it to a halt. And I'll stop there.
Councilman Park, Porter.
I did have a question, Mr. Chair. Would you be interested, so one of the major issues that was brought up in that last budget cycle, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Kennedy, how many inspectors are you all currently down in the, in DCD?
Good morning. So in our budget...
Just, I want to welcome again all of our agency representatives that we have here today. We have two people from the mayor's office of government relations, we have Housing Commissioner Kennedy, we have Planning Director Tim Keen, welcome. Congratulations on your confirmation. We have Finance Director Michael Moxon, we have Eric Tiso from the Department of Planning, we have Jeffrey Hoxstetler from the Law Department. Thank you all for spending this time with us this morning. Commissioner Kennedy.
Happy to be here, spending time with everyone this morning.
Oh, I'm sorry, we also have Gabe Stewart-Sikewitz, who is hiding here behind Tyler Shonell from the mayor's office.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Porter, thank you for that question. So in, at the budget hearing for this year that occurred in May, we did state, DCD did state, and we are on track, that it would be the first time, actually, in at least five years, if not longer, that we were on track to have, be back to the 71, 72 inspector range and filling those positions. We've been actively hiring. The other piece of what we've done in terms of reimagining how best, especially on our property maintenance inspection staff side, which some people call the code enforcement side, and it's property maintenance inspection, actually creating a separate sanitation inspection team. So the sanitation inspections are able to get addressed more quickly, and it actually goes back to kind of rethinking how that work is done, which manages the workload differently on that as well. So we have those sanitation inspectors in place. I think we had another final kind of three that are in the final hiring process on that side. And then we do have, part of the plan of filling the positions was a couple of senior inspector positions that were holding for promotional growth opportunity, because we, that's one of the challenging parts that we had before, was trying to be competitive with other jurisdictions and ensuring that we had those growth opportunities as well.
Out of the 71, how many of them are currently filled right now?
I would need to double-check on that with, with you, but I believe that we're over 60 to 62, but I can get that number for you.
62. And then my second question has, has to do with, one of the major issues that we're talking about today is just really the aspect of middle neighborhoods. Talk to me about how this particular bill impacts that middle neighborhood strategy that you all are going through. Another major issue that we've heard today is that, you know, this is not necessarily going to provide that affordability, is not necessarily going to provide the pathway to homeownership for particularly middle-class black communities. And so I want us to, we, we have all these plans out there, and so I want us to start weaving through the aspect for, for the average resident. Thank you.
That's an excellent question as well. In terms of middle neighborhood strategy, you know, this bill would support middle neighborhood strategy in the sense that it does allow and provide an option for some stability in neighborhoods from the standpoint of if we have a long-term homeowner that would like to stay in their neighborhood, but, you know, for different reasons, you know, ends up being able to afford to stay in the neighborhood, they could do a conversion, they could end up having additional family members, you know, that were able to stay. So from, from that standpoint, it, it supports the middle neighborhood strategy, especially from being able to provide additional ways for stability in terms of encouraging and having our long-term homeowners have an ability to stay and do something like that if they want to on that standpoint. I think that overall as well, in terms of, you know, we know that, you know, homeownership is a pathway, it is one, it is, it is one thing. Not everybody wants to be a homeowner, and, you know, we have a significant number of rentals, we also have a significant number of needs of rental units, you know, in the city projected over the next, you know, 15 years or so, in the hunt, like, over 140,000 units that we need in terms of rental units. You know, so overall, we support homeownership, we want to see homeownership, we know that in some instances, a converted property can support homeownership because it allows someone to purchase, be a homeowner, you know, have additional income. We can see this on the rental side as well. One thing that we have looked at just overall from a housing standpoint in terms of planning and looking at different cities across, not specific to this bill per se, but overall, when you have more units, you, and more units available, you do see, you know, in terms of rentals, more units, you can see affordability, you know, it's a, it's a supply and demand component to that. So... You know, it's a, it's a supply and demand component to that. So.
And the, my last two questions, Mr. Chair, if you would allow. Okay, last two questions. What's the average price of a conversion that you see in the city of Baltimore? And how likely is it for an average person to assume those costs or a larger property developer?
I think, um, it would depend on the property and it would depend on the property's size. Um, and, you know, given, um, let's say a long-term homeowner that is in a single-family detached house that wants to stay in their neighborhood and convert that, um, you know, they could, depending upon how it's configured, where the stairs are, uh, where to put in, you know, the kitchen and bath and so forth.
So, so let me just, let me just provide the, let me just provide a foundation of why I asked that question. So one of the major issues that we're having is that folks are saying, oh, these homes can be, they can be converted. Um, once they're there, the average person that are living in these neighborhoods cannot necessarily afford the conversion. They can't afford the land use attorney to advocate for their conversion. Um, I, I, I want to, I want to make sure that we are properly putting apples to apples, particularly when we're talking about costs, um, who's going to afford it, who's not going to afford it, but also, um, the socioeconomic potential of said neighborhoods that are already in place now. So, you, I mean, you don't have to answer. I just want to make sure that we are mindful with that conversation.
If I, uh, just quickly on that point, we do see, you know, sort of equal numbers of people coming here right now and to the BMZA seeking to do conversions and expansions of, uh, existing multifamily. And, uh, is, we see equal numbers of people, I would say, we're close to equal numbers of people who have attorney or land use, um, what do they call it, permit expediter, uh, representation and who do not. The bill, uh, that we voted today from Councilman Gray is somebody who did not hi- hire anybody. This was an average person. They didn't hire anybody. But I think it's notable that this bill takes that, that cost away entirely, right? Nobody has to come to us having hired somebody for thousands of dollars and they don't have to incur the delay to their project, the cost of, you know, the, the delay has a cost in and of itself. Um, and, and so that does make it more possible for people to come, uh, without needing to hire land use.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chair, I fully accept that. But I, I, again, I also want to, I also want to underscore the point of the socioeconomic and economic mobility perspective. If you are building a apartment or a house, that's at least like a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars into, um, into a home for said conversion. What we're, what we're talking about, if, if you're building another apartment, if we're talking about building another apartment, building another aspect of a house, that, those are added funds that regular folks just, they, they, they necessarily don't have. So.
Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, my colleagues. I first wanted to speak, thank you, Madam Vice President, for your thoughts. Um, I want to clarify here, um, so I'm, I'm currently, and I've been really consistent here, currently oppose the bill as it currently stands and it would only take a series of amendments that I thought were targeting the use of that tool to make it, uh, to one, get the biggest benefit out of it and to prevent, um, uh, any of the potential consequences or negative harms or limit those as much as possible. So, um, when I say tool, I mean that in a value neutral way. Um, and that, uh, tools without proper guidance or use are, can often be misused and can have negative impacts. And so my goal in making amendments is to try to find a way to fine tune this to limit negative outcomes and promote more positive community development outcomes that we share. Uh, I really appreciate, uh, and this is predates my arrival here a year ago. I've always appreciated our chairperson for being very clear, um, about his values, his beliefs and how they shape, uh, his approach to public policy. Um, and, and he gave us an example of that again right now, um, in that clarity. And so, um, in particular, I, all zoning, I, I think I'm speaking, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to misrepresent. And so if I am, I'm sure you'll correct me. But essentially, all zoning is in and of itself, um, a negative and bad thing. And that, um, and that we would be, that this is a small step towards a, a larger goal based on your belief that all zoning is bad, um, towards, uh, starting to peel back one layer at a time, that zoning. Um, I've also heard you speak that, that, um, that homeownership is not, uh, for, for anyone, for you, for anyone else. It's not particularly a goal or something that should be pursued or supported, um, in the city. I, yeah, I've heard you say that, uh, that any kind of housing should be able to be built anywhere and that anybody can find it in any community. And that's fine. Um, you also lifted up very much of the positivities in terms of density and a variety of housing, variety of people and options of, uh, highly dense, uh, R eight neighborhoods, right? I heard you say that here. I've heard you say it elsewhere. And so I, I'd be interested then in an approach from you that would, uh, instead of, um, uh, applying, uh, new standards or imposing this kind of new use, which isn't a comprehensive rezoning, but has the impact of comprehensive rezoning, um, on R eight neighborhoods, uh, is there a possibility to have a conversation about having R eight standards that currently exist applicable, uh, in all the other, uh, zoning districts, uh, that that might be approach that would achieve the density you want without also kind of being highly disruptive to highly dense, well-developed, um, uh, R eight neighborhoods that already exist? I'd say underneath it all, this belief that all zoning is inherently discriminatory and, and bad and, and all to be peeled back, um, as rapidly as possible, but in politically palatable, bite-sized ways. I think underneath that then is that there is in fact, uh, an opposite set of, or, or a, a consistent, consistent set of beliefs that somehow the market is free from systemic racism, that somehow the market is free from discrimination, that somehow the market, if left, uh, left alone from racist government interference, which the government has often done, uh, will somehow result in, in non-disparate, non-racial, non-discriminatory, non-negative outcomes. I don't believe or trust the market the way that you seem to do. That, that oftentimes what we've seen is that, that unrestricted capitalism combined with personal greed, combined with racism, has resulted in horrific impacts whether the government was involved or not. And when the government tags in and says, how can we help you achieve those racist goals? Well, then we get systems like we've seen in Baltimore. But simply, simply rolling the government back out without also taking proactive steps to say, we still are operating within a system which is embedded with systemic racism and therefore just removing policies without also then implementing policies which aim to correct those things, not being proactive about that, I would say through a series of amendments to this bill or in other ways, doesn't actually mean that the, that the system we're creating or that we're attempting to shift is somehow less disparate in its outcomes. Especially when we can look at historic conversions and see, you know, that, uh, over the last six years, sixty, seventy, uh, seventy-six percent of the conversions that have come through this council through the process the vice president described, uh, were in two council districts, the seventh and the ninth on the west side in R eight, R eight zones, right? I mean, this is, um, we, we can already say like that it already has a disparate impact, right? And so, um, and so let's be honest then about what a disparate, disparate impact is and decide if, if it's an impact we want or not. But to pretend like we don't know or can't reasonably predict, um, where the impact of this bill will fall, looking at history and also being aware of the restrictive covenants that are in place, which prevent it from being applied at all in certain communities, um, is, is turning a, a blind eye to a, uh, an equity lens that ought to be at the forefront of this conversation. That simply removing this does not somehow make it an equitable policy when it won't be applied and, and it won't impact our communities in an equitable way. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm going to go to, um, agencies here, um, in the mayor's office to, um, to respond to these and other concerns that have been raised. But I'll just say, you know, for my part, um, it's, you know, it's, it's obvious that sixty-seven percent of the conversions are going to take place in two districts that have extreme high vacancy rates, where there is the lowest cost of acquisition of vacant and, uh, other properties in highly vacant, highly blighted neighborhoods. It's obvious that there's going to be more one-off investment in those neighborhoods and that, that is where the bulk of conversions are going to take place when we disallow ver- conversions almost everywhere else. That it is harder to make the economics work, uh, for conversions in, uh, certain other neighborhoods where we even allow it, um, namely in the first district and in the, the eleventh district. And, um, and that eighty-four percent of the land in the city is prohibited from allowing any conversion by any means at all. And, and so what this does is acknowledges that, look, there is consistent, significant conversion interest and renovation interest in the neighborhoods where we allow it already and where no bill has ever come to this council, where somebody has said, I want to do a conversion in this neighborhood by Mondom and, or down by the B N O or wherever. No bill that has ever come to us has been rejected. None. It doesn't happen. And, and so we're going to continue to see these bills come before us and we're going to continue to approve, approve them. And that also, I'm convinced that in those same neighborhoods, there are also illegal conversions happening. That if we make it legal, ensures the greater likelihood that people will actually get permits to do that work and that they will get caught if they're not doing it with the permits necessary. And that we will then also have the ability to inspect and require, you know, uh, ensure licensure at a higher rate than what we have right now, while at the same time expanding the ability to do it so that there is an equitable impact of allowing for conversions in the other neighborhoods that make up the eighty-five percent of residentially zoned land that prohibit conversion outright today. Um, I, I want, I, I, I want to go, I, I responded because my own comments were commented on. I, I want to go to the mayor's office first, next, to see. They've done a substantial amount of listening. Do they want to speak to various concerns that have been raised? I want to give them the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Tyler Chanel, Deputy Director of Government Relations in the Mayor's Office. First, just want to obviously thank the residents that came out today to testify, um, on a bill regardless of, uh, their posture. And second, obviously, want to thank the committee, um, for yet another opportunity to talk about this bill. Um, you know, we've engaged with residents on, uh, quite a few occasions. We've engaged with, uh, members of the council individually and now are engaging again with the committee. Um, and, uh, this is exactly what we want, right? Like, we want to hear, uh, the deliberations so that we, we can make sure that, uh, we are putting forth the, uh, best possible version of this bill. Um, and, you know, we just look forward to continuing to hear, uh, some of the ways that you all think, uh, that we could make the bill better. And then want to, obviously, if my director's here, Nina, if you want to add anything else to that or if you're good.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. So Nina Themelis, Director of Government Relations for Mayor Scott. Um, just really wanting to echo, um, the deputy director's comments that, you know, we, we do believe, and Mayor Scott does believe that the bill as introduced is a solid piece of policy. However, we don't want to, uh, move forward with legislation that doesn't have widespread support. And so we just want to make sure that we have these ongoing conversations with members of the council, with members of the community to ensure that, um, a version that moves forward, um, has, has deliberated and talked through all of the various points that members of the council and community have raised to date.
Thank you. Um, I'm reminded, uh, the council vice president, committee vice chair, mentioned the state position on the bill. And this was sent to us, it was forwarded to me by Nina Themelis at the, during the last hearing. Um, and I did send it around by email to the committee members. But I think it's meaningful and want to, I'm just going to read the state's letter of support for this. Council President Cohen and members of the Baltimore City Council, this is dated November twentieth. Maryland is experience a housing, uh, experience a housing crisis. Families are finding it increasingly difficult to rent or buy, with some living in substandard housing while many others are doubling or tripling up due to the almost prohibitive expense of leasing or homeownership. More than half, fifty-two percent, of renters in Maryland spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing in a rental market that has seen a thirty-seven percent increase in median rents since two thousand and ten. Meanwhile, twenty-three percent of Maryland's homeowners spend a third or more on their mortgage every month. It is projected that there is a shortage of, of at least ninety-six thousand housing units statewide, disproportionately impacting young professionals and working-class families. The state of Maryland supports the Housing Options and Opportunity Act. From the creation of a new housing category, multifamily, low density, to expanding where two-to-four unit homes are allowed, from eliminating outdated residential conversion rules to decoupling housing from a lot size requirement, this bill would directly create more housing options in Baltimore City, adding flexibility and, most importantly, greater options for housing. It opens the door to homeownership or affordable rentals for more Baltimore residents without stressing local infrastructure, and it reduces the cost of construction for new housing, creating greater affordability to more city residents. Middle housing is a crucial but often scarce portion of Maryland's housing stock. And this bill helps to alleviate some of that scarcity and provide relief for our struggling neighbors in Baltimore City. The combined effort of the federal, state, county, and municipal governments will need to be brought to bear in order to address our housing crisis. I applaud the mayor for proposing this bill and the Baltimore City Council's efforts to make housing more affordable in the city. I want to thank you in advance for your consideration and passing this into law and taking a step to directly act on an increasing production, on increasing production in Baltimore City to help lessen the financial load on the shoulders of your constituents. Thank you, Jake Day, Secretary. So I just wanted to make sure that we had that, um, on the record here. We, uh, I wonder, should we spend some time discussing any of the amendments that have been brought up here? We have, um, the first of what I expect will be several proposals from the mayor's office. We also have, uh, a couple from Councilman Parker, um, that I also believe are reflective of the interests of the mayor's office. During public testimony, we heard what I would say was a mischaracterization of the planning commission's representation. Um, the planning commission resoundingly voted unanimously to support this bill, to recommend the city council support this bill. But also said, we would like to know what the impacts are over time. We think that it would be smart for there to, once it is passed, be some accounting and study of what actually comes as a result of it. Um, and so, and, and so they recommended that we pass the bill unamended except for wi- the addition of a study requirement every three years. And we've distributed that, um, the language for that study requirement. We just got this, uh, today. And so I wonder if any of the members have had an, an opportunity to look over this, uh, study language, if there are any comments or thoughts on that, or if folks want to hold off on commenting on that. But I want to, I do want to ask, uh, Tyler to speak to it. And perhaps, uh, Tim, Eric.
Yes, I can just do a quick, brief overview and then obviously any other folks from the administration here can add anything if they want to. Um, so before you, uh, members, you, you have, uh, one amendment, um, which is kind of two separate things here. So we have on the first page, uh, which is just adding a reporting requirement to the BMZA, uh, which is that annually they'll submit a report to the mayor and city council. Um, the, contain the total number of approvals of conditional use conversions for all multifamily dwellings of more than two units in the previous calendar year and the total number of any denials of those conditional, uh, use conversions, um, of more than two units, uh, and the reason for each denial. Uh, and then on the second page, you have, uh, which is the, uh, amendment that was recommended by the planning commission, uh, which is the triennial report. And it's essentially just calling on the planning commission, uh, and a director of planning. We did add an additional piece to that, which is in collaboration with the, um, Department of Housing and Community Development that they produce, uh, a triennial report to the mayor and city council. Uh, and that that report must include the number of buildings constructed for the purpose of a low-density multifamily dwelling use during the reporting period, uh, the number of buildings approved, uh, for a conditional use conversion to a low-density multifamily dwelling use during that reporting. low-density multifamily dwelling use during that reporting period, the number of units in each building constructed, um, or converted, the gross floor area of each unit created as a result of the construction or conversion, uh, the zoning district, council district, and neighborhood where each of these, uh, developments are happening, um, and finally, a recommendation on whether to continue or modify, uh, the status of, um, low-density multifamily dwell, dwellings. And then lastly, just, uh, a requirement that the director of planning and the commissioner of housing, uh, both, uh, ensure that the data necessary for the report, um, is collected and preserved.
Uh, thank you. Just for clarification, so the, the way this is written essentially assumes the adoption of an amendment to the bill, um, as, is that correct? It assumes an amendment, uh, is adopted that essentially is in the form of what we know that the mayor's office has discussed with folks about allowing two units by right, but then requiring that any conversion, um, or any multifamily low-density use for three or four units would have to go to the BMZA. And so it specifically speaks to this, um...
Right, yeah, and we'll make sure you get the...
...point of conditional use.
Right, and the, the version that is probably what should just be reflective of the bill as it is currently drafted.
Yeah. Uh, thoughts?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Yeah, please.
Why do I feel like, I, of course, represent the sixth district, and I'm one of those districts that might have had two conversions since its existence. Why do I feel like I'm being penalized by not doing all these conversions, like, in the ninth district? It, for me, it shows that it's no one-size-fits-all. It's, and, and I think this is what some of our constituency is trying to relay, that because our city is so diverse by neighborhoods, by culture, um, and some areas are not gonna have, they, they don't warrant these kind of conversions. Why do you have to make this a citywide bill? It's, it, it's not still being clear, clear to me.
Is this a comment on the amendment?
This is, uh, looking at these amendments just verifies me even more that I'm being penalized for not having conversions. Why do this when it doesn't affect the entire city? And I'm, I have a district that conversions are not affecting.
And, and, and thanks for that, Vice President Middleton. And here's what I'll say. What we said on the covenants, right, is that we two agree, we want this bill to be citywide. If we could have it that way, we would. The covenants that are in place are contracts, right? And we know that this country is founded on everybody's right to their property and, and, and contract law, right? And Jeff can add anything that he wants to add to the piece on the covenants. You're not hearing from us that we, uh, don't see a world, um, where this bill would have impact across our entire city. That, that is what we want.
I only have two areas that have covenants, and the majority of the district I represent is, this is just not warranted. It's not warranted.
Yeah.
And, and it's, that's why it should not be citywide. That's why there should be some type of, um, study. Using another district? I just cannot see this bill being citywide. It should, it shouldn't work that way.
Yeah, and it, and it...
The language of all this is not, I, I can't relate to.
Okay. Yeah, and I just do want to remind that there's nothing in here that requires conversion, right? So there's nothing in here forcing anybody in your district or any other council district to do these conversions to their properties. It just simply gives them the option.
This is ordinance.
Yeah, so this is a report, is, is so what will require these agencies, so BMZA, Planning Commission, Property and Housing Community Development, to collect these different data points, right? To, to aid in the, and at, at that three-year mark, the deliberation around the bill, its impact and, and things like that. It's, it's not intended to constrain or constrict anybody to do, uh, conversions. It, it is, if anything, you know, gives you more information to be able to have the conversation at that point.
Councilman Blanchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, so in general, I think it is a really, really good idea to have a triennial report. Um, the, we don't know exactly, like, I've done a lot of work, my office has done a lot of work trying to predict what we're going to see from this across a bunch of different neighborhoods, both in my district and citywide, but, but we'll never know for sure what this is going to look like in every single Baltimore neighborhood if, if it doesn't pass, right? We can only, we can only make educated guesses. So I think a triennial report is really important. Something that I, I don't know if this is feasible, and this may be something that Director King, um, could, could touch on if it's been discussed, but going, going back, I've, I've, I personally feel like, at the end of the day, the big blue arrow with this whole push on housing options and opportunity is, it's, it really is about affordability. We have the, when the banner had that article from two months ago, whatever, almost half of the residents, almost half of the rental home, uh, rental renters in the city are rent burdened. Almost half. Like, that, that should not be nor, that should be a normal thing. And that's, and over half of the city is renters, so almost, right? Like, do the math, like, the, the cost impact on a ton of Baltimoreans is very, very substantial. Um, I already have communicated my, my thoughts on the affordability aspect of all this, but I'm curious, would it be feasible to include an analysis of the cost of the new units that are coming online because of the package in the, um, in that report? Like, could we actually have it in the report where, of the new units that are being built, here's what they're costing, and here's what that compares to what we're seeing citywide?
Councilmember Blanchard, uh, what you're describing in terms of that report that would be given each three years, I'm sure is achievable. If we have such direction going into this legislation, in terms of its implementation, we can, we can design the system to collect whatever data we'd like, and so I'm sure that's achievable.
Okay. Thank you, Director. Yeah, that's, that's something that I would...
I think would be a great amendment to this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's exactly why I wanted to make sure that we had this amendment specifically in front of us, to give us something to kind of latch on to and, and talk about, like, if we're going to study this thing, what more, how fine a grain do we want in the reporting? Um, and so...
Mr. Chair, just a quick question for the councilman. Just to make sure I got it. So it's of the new units, essentially what, like, if they're being rented, what the rent is for them and as, and then what the rent is across the city, essentially?
Cost of conversion is what I heard.
Oh, cost of conversion.
No, sorry. No, I'm, I'm interested in, it's a little different, I think, um, Councilman Porter had brought up the cost of conversion question. What I'm asking is, like, if, whether it's a conversion or a new build or whatever, right? Because probably most of this that we're going to see is, is, you know, duplex, threeplex, fourplex, new builds, but, but with whatever we're seeing, what is the cost of rent? Or if it's an ownership opportunity, like, what is that cost? And how does that compare? Like, or is it actually helping us make Baltimore a more affordable place to live?
Okay.
Um, because that is something I'm really confident we'll do. I think it's a really important thing, but because of, and, and because of that, we should be making sure we study it and, and the public should be confident that, you know, in the legislation that we will be studying it.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thoughts for Councilman Parker?
Yeah, no, I really appreciate, uh, this amendment, and that came from the planning commission. Um, I do think, uh, that it's similar to some of the questions that I have, uh, that I, I asked of, uh, of the mayor's office and of the housing and planning departments at our last hearing to do some historic look at some of these same numbers, um, so that we can then both look backwards and look forwards, um, as we consider the bill. So I think, I think this is a really important part of that, but it doesn't preclude us making sure that we've, we've looked at our, our history of our conversions as well. Um, I think things to add to it along the lines of, uh, what Councilperson Blanchard was saying. Um, he mentioned the cost of owner-occupied and rental properties created by, um, by, uh, this legislation to be tracked here. I'd also be interested, and maybe, maybe it's implied, but also the, the number, right? So like, you know, there were five thousand units created and five hundred of those were, uh, owner-occupied, forty-five hundred were rented, whatever that is, but that, that mix in the end, not that that can change, because somebody can buy it and then rent it out next month, but to the extent that, that we, we have that information to know what that looks like, at least as it was created. The other, again, aligning it with vacant, uh, with our vacant building strategy, uh, they really get to know, again, not just historic, but as part of this, how many of these were houses, properties with VBNs that were, um, that were coming off of it, um, by, by use of this, uh, this new use. Um, so, uh, that's, those are the two things I would add to this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Tyler, you get that? Yeah. Yeah, I, I think there's, I think there's a wealth of information. Look, you can't know anything, uh, in a vacuum, right? We, we can't study the outcomes of something we prohibit from happening. Um, but I think that, uh, if we start to see some change, which, um, you know, I think we might be modest to begin with, uh, there's a lot of information. Councilman Parker talking about total number of units, I didn't realize, this is talking about the number of buildings constructed, the number of, uh, buildings approved, the number of units in each building, but we also want to know the total number of units that get created, um, which I'm sure we would be able to pull from aggregated data nonetheless. Um, you know, I, I could...
Can you also include the number of, um, rentals of older adult housing apartments? Can that be included in here?
Yeah, um, I'm going to ask you for clarification on that in a second, but let me just finish what I was, um, I, I really do think that, uh, and I think Councilman Parker talked about the VBNs, like, how many, how many of these are at buildings that had a VBN at the time of, uh, the application for the permit? Um, but I think there's even, like, there's, like, an in-between, like, how many of these are in houses that are, where the property is selling or assessed, I don't know, at, like, below-market rate for the, uh, for the, the neighborhood, right? Like I said before, I think that we're not going to be seeing houses that are in, like, you know, Zillow condition, where people are like, look at these photos of my beautiful house that I'm selling for as much as I possibly can, come move in here to your dream home. We're not going to see those homes being purchased at, you know, top-of-market prices and then converted into multifamily. The economics just don't work. I, I want to shout out, um, Josh Spokes from Councilman Blanchard's office for doing a kind of deep dive into that, um, uh, analysis. But that we will see those houses where, you know, maybe a typical house in the neighborhood is selling for three hundred thousand, those properties that are only selling for a hundred fifty or a hundred forty because they're in a deteriorated state of neglect, how many of, you know, but don't necessarily have a VBN, right? They still have all the windows in the place, they haven't been broken out, they're not boarded up, but the owner died ten years ago and it's been sitting, waiting for somebody to do something with it for a decade. Those, those distressed kind of properties, how many of those, um, below-market price are coming on versus, versus ones that were, you know, high-market value? Um, Councilman Gray?
Yep. Um, and another idea, uh, just came to mind is, is to provide more transparency is, um, if in the report we also could have conversions, um, particularly in neighborhoods or council districts, um, the percentage of owner-occupied versus investor home, um, which will also provide a level of clarity on, uh, whether or not, um, what types of investment is coming into Baltimore, whether it's folks that actually want to do things to their own house, or is it going to be driven, um, by primarily investors? Uh, and also the average, um, rent for new units versus existing stock as well? I think that will kind of provide some clarity as well.
I think that's exactly what Councilman Blanchard put on. Yeah. Uh, Councilman Middleton, did you want to clarify your question?
So I, uh, Park Heights, for example, several buildings that, the whole, that whole area is being revitalized. I have several, um, older adult housing being built, and people are moving in very rapidly, and we're talking about buildings with at least a hundred units. Um, waiting lists, and a number of these, number of the, uh, tenants are people that owned a single-family home or row house, which is vacant, and they move, and, and they're going to sell, but they moved into these apartments. So, um, we, I think that trend is happening around the city as well, and I think we need some numbers on, um, the, uh, buildings of sixty-two and over, and, and, you know, get those numbers in the community as well. It's just important, important, it's an important piece of this transfer of change.
Yeah, and so, Vice President Middleton, if I may, so, but those apartments wouldn't necessarily be being converted, though, under this bill? Are, are you asking for that, like, separately, that we, uh, that we track, um, where our older adults are living? Like, I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Um, well, we're, you're building, um, apartment complexes, basically. Uh, in, again, it shows the, the difference in the neighborhoods I represent versus the neighborhoods that are, some of the neighborhoods that are in the first or eleventh district.
Okay.
And, um, I just, we need clarity on, you know, this is some of the confusion.
Okay.
Between, between, you know, vacant, rental, I mean, houses that are vacant and sitting there, and the people that lived in the community that was in that house have moved into a brand-new apartment...
Okay.
...complex. And it's happening a lot, so this plays a role in that changeover, too.
Yes. Yeah, and so I'll, um, I'll take back to the team to see what, what we can do around the, the older adult piece, and then just for, like, to clarify, they won't be, this won't allow, like, apartment complexes, it's just four units, right? It was like, I don't want people to think that we going, they going to see these massive, like, apartment complexes in their neighborhoods under this bill, but I get, I get the piece around...
Well, four units is a lot of units in some of the big houses that are in communities.
Right, the bigger, okay.
Cal, like Callaway, Garrison, Ashburton.
Hmm. Okay. Yeah, I'll take the older adult housing piece back, and then I might just reach out to you for just a little bit more clarity to make sure that I, we can actually talk about it.
Um, I think we're generally familiar with the concept of the two-units-by-right, three-four by BMZA. Do, do we want to speak to this? Do we want to have a conversation about it? Okay, Councilman Parker, I'll let you go on it.
Just a little, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I won't claim any, while I certainly have introduced the amendment, I won't proclaim any particular ownership of it, except that it was an idea that was discussed. Um, I think in previous councils, uh, and planning commission hearings and different versions of this bill over the years, um, and certainly came up in conversations with community members, with Charlie, it came up in conversation in the mayor's office, and it had been talked about so much, I wanted to make sure, at least it got in front of us one way or another, so that we could, you know, have the conversation here and, and chat about it. So, um, I, I, for my, for my sake, I think it's by itself, it doesn't, um, it doesn't get the bill as far as it goes in terms of being able to really have this be an, an effective, uh, community development, uh, positive community development bill, uh, but it does, um, get us part of the way there, especially in terms of making sure that, um, there is an opportunity for the, uh, for the three-and-four-unit, uh, conversions to, um, to have public conversation, public hearing, and neighbors be involved. I think, um, we've certainly heard from plenty of folks that, uh, that that aspect of conversions is important for people to be heard and for there to be a process, and so, and as much as this idea, which again, doesn't belong to me, but I think is an important one to consider, um, would restore some aspect of that to the process, even as it does gum up the works of the BMZA, uh, a bit, uh, I think is, is a positive step forward from an amendment standpoint.
Uh, anybody from the mayor's office, or anybody want to speak to this at all?
Yeah, and, and, and thanks for that, Councilman Parker. I, I think that what, what we can say at this point is, um, obviously, like, that we received that, right? And we'll take it back and discuss, um, you know, and talking through all of the feedback that we've received from the committee today, um, kind of where we go, and, and again, as we kind of said earlier at the top of the year, just making sure that we do kind of produce, um, the best version of this bill that can, you know, garner the support, uh, as our, my director said, uh, in the committee and obviously in the full council as well as, uh, for community.
Cool. Um, yeah...
I agree. Um, Councilman Parker, thank you. That restores... That restores some of the power back to the council.
The, um, other amendment, uh, from Councilman Parker is essentially, it's a, it makes the numbers in the tables conform to the numbers that have changed since this bill was drafted, uh, because of the passage of 25 0064. And I know that, I mean, just looking at it, the way that the bill is drafted, it doesn't, it's not written in the style with capitals and brackets and things that indicates that there is to be any change to those numbers in the table. And so it's a little unclear actually whether it's even required. I know that the Department of Legislative Reference said that they didn't think it was even required, that, um, that even if we didn't do anything to amend those numbers to make them say the same thing as what they say in Council Bill 25 0064, um, that they would stay what they, that other bill has made them become. Um, I wonder, I want to make sure that we get the law department's opinion on that specifically. Also, whether it's even necessary to do that? Um, if you have a perspective now, we can take it? Or if we want to wait until you later consider it?
Yeah, thanks, Chair Dorsey. Jeff Hoxteller with the Law Department, um, did have a conversation with DLR, um, and was sort of deferring to their, their drafting discretion if they thought it was needed or not. I mean, certainly substantively, it doesn't really change anything in the bill. So I think our position would be we defer to DLR. There are certainly technical amendments, if anything.
Yeah, okay, yeah, essentially, two bills were drafted at the same time. Both had an iteration of a table. One bill showed the table as it is, this bill. The other showed the table as it is with some changes being made to it. That bill has passed and now we want, um, to make sure that if we pass this bill, that it's not somehow causing that same table to revert to what it was prior to the passage of the other bill. Um, I believe the DLR said that that is not what would happen, that it, it would not revert that way. So I think we're okay there, um, but we will just ask for maybe just written confirmation on that. Um, we've been here for a while today. We, um, I feel like this has been a meaningful conversation. Yeah, Councilman Gray?
Um, just something I was, I was thinking of, when we, when we were talking about earlier, you, you, uh, mentioned in R5 and R6, uh, right now currently, you can knock down, um, the building and build whatever you would like, as long as it's, you know, within bulky art regulations and, and what so. Um, I think a part of this bill and the intent of this bill is to make, um, a, a, a better Baltimore, but I also think that it is to right some of the wrongs. And for me, um, I, I think that if you allow that to happen, um, in R5 and R6, um, that maybe there, we can offer, and we can talk about this behind, um, as, as we move along this process, a way of easing community fears. Um, if you were to just knock down a building, um, maybe you have to go through that conversion process. Instead of just trying to rebuild, um, and knocking down something that in R3, R4, R5 through R8, uh, and trying to re, and try to build a, um, quadplex or triplex or duplex, um, the moment you knock down a building, um, then we will go into the, the entire conversion conversation. Now, whether that's going to be through, um, council ordinance or just going through the BMZA, that's something we can discuss. But I think, um, if we want to quell the fears and earn the trust of, um, the public, um, some of these things that we continuously hear about, uh, we have to address head-on.
That would be an interesting complete flipping of the table on the current standard, right? The current standard is that like, you can definitely do that right now and demonstrably, absolutely nobody is doing it. And to me, it seems like that should be enough to like earn the trust that it's going to happen very little. It's going to continue to happen very little, I don't know. But, uh, the idea that we, that we would flip that while at the same time making it easier to do the conversions of the existing structure. I mean, yeah, uh, look, to me, the idea that the code on its surface says multifamily is permitted by right in R5 and R6, but then we have this other thing somewhere else that says, actually, but no, you can't do conversions, that you can only do it by ground-up construction, is one of these like really insidious ways that the code has like so many layers to it, like saying, we allow housing on the surface and then actually make, we make it practically impossible. I can tear down an R5 or R6 structure today and put it back up with the exact same exterior that was already there. And I can make it multifamily, but I can't leave the interior, leave the exterior that exists and just reconfigure the interior. That's so crazy to me.
Yeah, and while I understand that, you know, words, the, the, the words could flip it. We're, we're talking about lived experiences and fears of community members. Um, and when we are addressing it, um, I think it's just prudent that if this is something that we can add and you don't believe that it's going to make any type of change, um, but at the end of the day, it gives more security for a community that feels like the, the walls are going to close in. I think it's something that is worthwhile to explore.
Yeah, and, and again, I'll take it back. Um, I think, Mr. Chair, what would be helpful is, because I, I've been taking notes, obviously, on the various things that we discussed, but to get from the committee, I think maybe of the members who do have some ideas around what we could add, if you could take an opportunity to maybe kind of, you know, fully parse them out and send them over that way I can make sure that we are able to, in the mayor's office, have an actual robust conversation about, uh, the different amendments and ideas that you all have offered here today.
Thanks to everybody who's been here. Uh, especially thanks for the folks who just sat here quietly and just waiting in case we had a reason to call on you. Yeah, and, um, I think this has been a worthwhile, productive discourse here today. I'm glad that we got into, um, folks sharing kind of concretely, constructively their thoughts on the bill. Again, as I said at the outset, it's not really my experience that we have like extended back and forth among council members the way I thought we would. You know, as a naive person coming in nine years ago to the city council, I thought, oh, public debate, this is like what we do, I guess, but not really. Um, so, uh, I just thank everybody for engaging, including our committee members who, uh, had to leave earlier. Um, I am going to just note for the record, we have done two hearings where we have taken public testimony. From here on out, we will continue to work on this bill as work sessions in dialogue among the committee members and agency staff as we see fit. But we are closing public testimony on this bill as of today. Thank you.